We're on you, but glad to have you, Jimmy.
I've brought in some chip clips for everybody because I still have five hundred left from my last election.
Hey, we used them.
Yeah, if you didn't get a chip clip, please pass them around. Everybody take a chip.
Oh, then I'm gonna bring you some of my magnets because I don't want to talk about how many magnets I have.
So many chip clips. I was like, oh, my God, that's another bag.
You should see our refrigerator because you really can't see anything but magnet.
I didn't do the magnet.
I have one of the magnets decisions to make. It's the it's the one that has the letter opener in it?
Tell me you don't need one.
How would you do not eat the chips?
Actually, no, I don't.
Seriously, take it back. You don't? Oh, my God, I'd like to let them. Pass them to everybody in the audience. I don't care.
I don't know if Jimmy compares or not.
That's what she might know. Good for cats.
She's kind of thirty.
There she is.
Okay, we got you. We have a not great connection, but we can hear you. Yeah, that's fair.
This is beyond the worst. This pressure internet cell phone service for your net.
I don't know, Genesee, like every time I go to Genesee, if I'm on a call, whoops.
I was gonna ask you about that, Jenny.
Okay, it's the dead zone. It's like.
My entire professional career.
Yes, it's just that you come over the hill by that lonely little tree and then you're coming down and the wall goes boop.
Have you noticed that on ours on twenty third by your house that all radios go silent? The radio, every station goes silent.
Did you have someone doing that?
Do you have someone doing that?
Have you done something, Jeremy? What have you been doing over there?
I'll see that big tower.
You can. I was gonna say, does he have like some sort of blocker that he gets all the emergency stuff?
Does he get the priority calls?
Exactly. That's what I mean. Like, I.
Like, do you imagine somebody?
Yeah, like any of my any radio station I'm I'm playing will just go silent until I get around the corner and then it's.
No, I gotta find out. Thank you.
And I thought it's your wormhole. It's better than me.
You don't you don't want to know why.
I probably don't. There's a lot of stuff going on in those apartments. I do not want to know about it for sure.
That's one in the other.
What's that?
Different conversation.
I know. I'm not.
All right, we are live streaming and good to go whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Okay, uh, it's five thirty three. I want to, uh, welcome everybody to the February twelfth, twenty twenty four. City by Idaho Springs work session. We only have one item, but it's a very important item. One near near our hearts, and it is about affordable housing. Jonathan, I want to say in advance, uh, thank you. Uh, I know you've done a lot of work on this, including originally getting the hundred and sixty five thousand dollar IHOP grant, which frankly has, uh, you know, put us in the position we're at now. Uh, to to really try and make some meaningful progress on this, but I'll let you take it away.
Oh, man, cows. It's been an honor to work on this issue. It's something that's pretty close to my heart, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this work for Idaho Springs and in Clear Creek County. Um, this staff report is a little bit long. I wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of everything that is happening right now because there's been a lot over the last several years, and I just wanted to make sure that we had a good kind of baseline understanding for for kind of where we have been going and kind of what the strategy has been. Um, I think in a lot of ways that Idaho Springs really been positioned at the forefront of the housing crisis in Clear Creek County. You've been leading for the last probably decade on these efforts. And it really started with bringing the first low income housing tax credit funded project to the city and the county, which is the Riverbend Residences. And as you know, that replaced a, uh, old
mobile home.
Mobile home park that had just been in existence for a very long time. And the city did some really innovative things to make sure that residents weren't displaced during that project. And that project is now running and it's fairly successful. One thing that's challenging with Lytech projects, which is the acronym for Low Income Housing Tax Credit, is that they are deed restricted for a certain period of time, in this case thirty years. But they are set, the income levels are set by the the statistical area that you're in. So we're in the Denver statistical area. And that really skews some of our rents. Colorado also has.
John, I I just want to inject this is huge. So Denver area, uh, what median income is seventy one five?
Yes.
When and we're nowhere near that.
No.
Sixty percent of ours are forty two thousand. Sixty percent.
Sixty two percent of, well, not even Idaho Springs are under forty two thousand. The county's a little higher with second homeowners. Our city, they they'll say our AMI is like sixty two thousand, but it's really not. Looking at median income in Idaho Springs is really not an effective measure. You have to look at how many people are in different industries and and kind of what people are actually making on the street. And it really tells the story better, but what happens is because Colorado has a law that allows low income housing tax credit projects to do what's called income averaging. So they can take different incomes of folks like up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, as long as they have some lower end folks. What ends up happening is they get a range of rents at that facility. And it really is set based on what you make. So they have like a whole process they need to go through to see that. So I think we all know that that there are um, low income rents there for sure, and there's an ability to get lesser rents than what in other places. But because it's a federal program, it doesn't really provide a local level of control that we need, although it provides a really good housing resource for us. So that's really kind of the first project that we started working on. That's all obviously put into place. There's a couple of other projects that have happened over time. There's a Habitat for Humanity project that happened over by the cemetery that the city was involved in. And currently, there's the eight homeownership Habitat for Humanity units that are up behind the Elks Club, which are currently under construction. So overall, like we have been working for some time on just increasing our housing inventory in the city and trying to make sure that we have opportunities for people to move into homeownership. One really cool thing about the Habitat project is every single person that ended up getting a unit there had local ties to Idaho Springs. So that was a really good thing for our community. Um, the next thing I want to talk about, you guys know about this because we just did it. But in twenty twenty two, Colorado voters approved Proposition one, two, three, which created a state income tax fund to fund affordable housing projects. It's a revenue source one tenth of one percent, which in the first year of operation generated about three hundred million dollars across the state. It sounds like a lot of money, but in housing land, it's like nothing.
Yeah.
So it's a really cool program because what it does is allows us to get all these extra funds for housing. They're kind of developing the programs right now. But in general, you can use them to build like modular housing, which is a really good option in Idaho Springs. You can use them to acquire property. And a lot of people think that there'll be like some money for preservation of homes, which is a really good thing for Idaho Springs because we have a lot of homes that people could either age in place in or that might be able to be retrofitted to be a little more livable.
Are modular homes, would that be like park park homes? Would those be considered like the park houses?
Modular is like a new, it's like constructed inside and they're completely, they're not, they're not mobile homes.
It's like a Lego kind of situation.
Yeah, you wouldn't.
I didn't know though if the park homes were considered modular, like I've seen them.
You wouldn't know that some modulars were modulars. Honestly, they they're such high end. They go from.
Yeah, they can be much better quality because they're in a factory without getting wet all the time and things like that, and they have to survive the sheer forces of being shipped. So they can be a much better construction method. Um, and that's something that the state really wants to do.
And I just want to inject that at least our county, there's no difference between a site built of, you know, statistics that, you know, that you have to meet like with your side wind load, your snow load. There's no difference between a factory built and and a site.
A site built.
And, uh, I just watched a really nice two story modular go up across the street, uh, up in Saint Mary's. And, uh, I I also, since we're on the one, two, three, uh, nonprofits get loans and they're usually low interest loans. Municipalities get grants. So it's it's a big difference, uh, with City by Idaho Springs.
It's a, it's got the potential to be a really cool program, but one of the things about Prop one, two, three is that they're kind of developing in the programs on the fly. And so we're going to have ability to come after these grants. What the state wanted in exchange for us was a housing commitment, and so we had to go through this math process, which we talked about, um, last year. And basically, it came up with a number of two hundred and forty eight units that they think were short in Idaho Springs. We're supposed to provide twenty two of those units in the next three years. Now, we've already actually kind of worked on that number because the Habitat project counted, so we have eight units in the pipeline. There's really no negative factor if we can't meet that goal. It just means we can't apply for funding for one year. But I think that overall, we're probably in pretty good shape because of the access to money that we have through that program. And I think especially next year and this year. I think that it could provide some really good funding sources for us. It's kind of like what I wanted to talk about the second for is because it kind of forms the backdrop for everything we're talking about. Because the more we are able to meet that commitment, the more funding we're able to get, the more, um, you know, we're able to work collaboratively with the state and kind of make sure that we're getting what they want and what we need. Um, the next thing that I've got on my staff report is the IHOP grant. We talked about this recently when Amy Saxton came and we had kind of an abbreviated meeting, and so I do want to spend a little bit more time on it tonight. But as the mayor said, we got this grant, a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, which we matched with the county, so there was a total of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for what they called an IHOP grant. And basically what that does is we are to look at different opportunities to be innovative in the housing space in Clear Creek County and Idaho Springs and all the other municipalities. We applied regionally. Um, Idaho Springs again kind of led the effort here. We wrote the grant and we managed the fiscal side of the grant. I'm kind of leading the effort on the Idaho Springs side, and I've been working very closely with Amy Saxton. And then we've been working with Georgetown and Silverplume Empire as well to make sure that they're participating. But Idaho Springs and the county split the match. The other communities didn't participate in that part, and we thought that because the work we're doing is regional, that that's kind of appropriate in this stage. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is come up with what we call, the project's called a clear path home, and it really kind of illustrates what we're doing. We're trying to make sure that we don't have a housing crisis in Clear Creek County more. It's really what we're getting at. And we built the project into three tasks. I know you guys read about this in my staff report. I'm just gonna kind of touch them really quickly. But what we did is we have one project that's community engagement, and that is intended to be true authentic engagement, to really make sure that any kind of housing initiatives and policy that's built by any of the communities is supported by what the residents want. We're trying to take what's called an asset based approach to development in this case, and that means that we take the people who live here and we really make sure that what they need is put at the forefront. So the communication is coming to you so that you can make sure that the decisions you're making are based on on community needs. Um, that work started with what with, uh, what we call our ICS campaign. And the goal of that campaign was to kind of talk about some of the crises that we see at a macro level in the county and to talk about how we might address them, what people actually want to do. So in the video, I don't know if you've all watched it. But basically, it's got a lot of people from the county, um, from workers to commissioners, just cutting the mayors in there as well, talking about what we might say yes to, which might be, I want to live where I work, or I want to be able to raise my family where I was raised, or things like that. That campaign kind of forms the backbone of the work we're going to continue to do with community engagement. We recently kind of finalized the materials for the engagement campaign that'll be happening this spring. That's the last part of this task. And the goal would be to create a report that kind of gives you that information about what people are actually needing so that we can make sure that any policy we create is centered in those ideas. The second part of this project was code review and alignment. And basically, we know that housing is a regional issue, and especially in Clear Creek County, it affects us all the same. Like, a housing problem in Georgetown is the same as a housing problem in Idaho Springs. Housing unit Idaho Springs might benefit somebody in Georgetown. So if we work together to make sure that we get housing to happen when it is most contextually effective, you know, on a site that actually is appropriate for it, it benefits us all. So what we did is we hired a consultant, and what they have been doing is looking at the land use codes of Clear Creek County, Empire, Silverplume, Georgetown, and Idaho Springs. And they are issuing reports for all the same that do two things. One is looking at based on meetings that they have with stakeholders from each community, they're looking at opportunities to be innovative in the housing space. So we just got the Idaho Springs version of the report, the draft report for staff review before it comes to planning commission and council ultimately. And some of the things that are in there are looking at where it may be appropriate to have ADUs and whether or not it may be appropriate to um, what else isn't like maybe potentially density bonuses or or how we might treat short term rentals in the future. There's a, there's a lot of different kinds of of strategies that can be used and they're all based on what's in House Bill twelve seventy one. So there's a menu of options that were kind of identified as as methods to create innovative housing solutions in communities like Idaho Springs. And so this report basically looks at the feasibility of those options and looks at the conversations they have with stakeholders in our community and makes recommendations based on that.
Are they also looking at like open land? We have a lot of open space and some of that open space, not necessarily just Idaho Springs, but other stakeholders within our county where it it was at one point something else and now it's open space. Like, I don't want to lose a lot of our open space, but you know, I feel like from a housing standpoint, we should be able to house ten thousand people, which is almost the population of our county. Like, we don't necessarily have to bring other people in, but are we looking at it from, okay, we average between nine and ten thousand people in this county? That's where our housing needs to go.
Yeah, and I think that is a recommendation in the reports. There's always a balancing act in Clear Creek County between animal habitat and people habitat, and that's really honestly where we get to on that conversation. But that is one of the recommendations in the Clear Creek County report, and it is specifically a recommendation in the Idaho Springs report.
So the Clear Creek County commissioners, in their report, they have put out that they want to take back land that they have actually purchased for open space from a commercial?
Not yet. They they have a report based on the stakeholder meetings and their review of the land use code, and it makes several recommendations like that. But right now, we're at the draft review stage, and then that would go to planning commissions and and council or commissions for adoption.
I mean, my my knowledge of this is is that the county in particular is the most responsible for taking developable home possible density land off the market and putting it into a market that we can't as a community touch. Is that, am I not correct on that?
I think that, well, I think that there's a, it's kind of a nuanced issue. I'll give you an example. There is a site near Dumont that has been talked about for affordable housing for a long time.
By acres, I believe. That's right.
Yeah, but it doesn't have any utilities and it doesn't have a lot of infrastructure.
It's the water, yeah.
None of those things are insurmountable. We didn't have utilities a lot of years ago. I mean, I I don't think that's, I mean, honestly, Jonathan, I I'm a hundred percent for the the housing. I just think that the county has been stymieing the, I say the county as in the entity of the commissioners have been making it impossible for the county to actually do anything. I think tighter hands with money.
I think that that policy direction is changing a little bit where I'm going, but like some of this infrastructure, I'll give like Virginia Street, for example, eighteen hundred mile or eighteen hundred feet of of water and sewer pipe is exorbitantly expensive.
Of course.
So we know that those costs are there, and so part of this is going to be looking at open space where it's most feasible to develop housing. Because there's a lot of sites in the county that that may be, and this is later in my report, but we've been doing the same thing with city property. And one of the recommendations for the county is that they do the same. And there has been some talk, they just recently changed how the open space commission works. It now is if the structure of it has changed at the county level, and one of the things I know that they would like to tackle is looking at what's the most effective and feasible animal habitat versus what's most effective and feasible people habitat and trying to find good ways to to balance that. And I'm not saying they're gonna they're gonna get it right off the bat, but I do know that that's one of the things that they want to try to do.
Within this, I I have another question. Within this this IHOP, this project, if the entities all agree, because there's four entities plus the county, so if all five entities agree with part of this, are there, like, is there a way to keep everybody inside this agreement? Because that's another thing that I see, like somebody a year in goes, you know what? I don't want to, and here it flips out of here.
Yeah, let me finish this code review section and then we'll talk about the NJHA because there's like two distinct tasks here. So what we have to do as a community on the code review piece and alignment, this report, we'd like to bring it to planning commission and ultimately to council for adoption, and then it makes several recommendations. We need to adopt one strategy to be compliant with the grant. Now, that could be something like we, um, allow ADUs, which is accessory dwelling units as a use by right in every zone district where they meet the guidelines for an ADU. So our guidelines for an ADU are kind of vague, but it's raised. Well, not really actually, because it's just there's a size requirement and that has some setbacks, has a water tap, has a, well, yes.
Yes.
Well, it act, it's a little bit different in residential how that works. So that's why I kind of I yes it like this, but ultimately, that's like the kind of thing we're talking about, or maybe it's like create a fund for the preservation of housing so people can age in place. But there's a lot of different strategies we could use.
Okay, yeah.
So that's kind of what we need to do as a city on that piece, but ultimately, the goal would be is that every community, we recognize this regional approach, so even if we're not able to form an NJHA, there's consistent rules about how affordable housing development might work. So that if we say, look, we can't pitch your project here, but you can go to Empire and they have what you need there, and you'll face a similar process, so we can just coordinate a little bit more closely. That's kind of the goal of the second task. The third task is kind of the bigger one, and that's kind of what I think your question was more about. What we would really like to do, and this could be the qualifying strategy that makes everything in the grant work, is is consider whether we should create a multi jurisdictional housing authority. And create kind of to your point, this could be a really good thing for Idaho Springs because what it does is it takes the top level of control from the county away in housing, and it builds a body that would be built from all the cities in the county working collectively. This is something that's allowed under state statute entitled twenty nine article four. And basically, what it does is it says, we're going to create a board. It's going to have appointed members from each community and then like for the county, so there's a, it would be like a, like, say, a five member board or whatever it decides to be. And that body would be basically in charge of housing efforts. And what they would do, there's a lot of different things they can do in statute, and we would be able to say what we wanted to do. That's the important thing. We don't have to do everything they say in statute. But in general, they have like financial and operational powers, such as planning, financing, acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, repair, maintenance, manage, operate housing projects and programs. So they can basically build housing and operate housing. Um, they have regulatory powers to set fees, rents, they can charge for their services, they can issue subpoenas, they can issue recommendations to cities about nuisances, all sorts of stuff like that.
Where does the money come from?
Is it like a, I'm sorry, can you go ahead?
No, good.
Well, like a special district near, almost?
It's similar but different. So they're they're like called a quasi governmental eight entity, basically. It's not, yeah, not too dissimilar from like the fire authority. It'd be kind of very, it'd be like a similar structure.
So you're you're, the people would be appointed by
By, yeah.
The powers that be in the towns and the county and.
Yeah, by the parties of the agreement.
So is there an application process though to get onto the board?
Well, city council, city council would have that authority here. So you guys would decide. And that's kind of what I recommended if we do this is that you guys either appoint one of your own or you do something like if we got a planning commission opening, they write a letter and say, I would be interested in doing this, and then you guys can choose.
So it's not like a special district, like organized crime. That's really all.
No, it's.
Yeah.
No, it's more like a fire authority. Yeah, like.
Well, fire special, yeah.
Yeah, which is four hundred twenty nine.
There are organized crimes. I I guess the question is, though, for all those things that you're talking about, where does the money come to run that sort of?
There's a lot of different ways to do it.
That was my question.
So the ways that you can do it, well, here's here's how it generally works. They can either create their own revenue stream and be revenue self supporting, and a lot of them are. And what they do is they manage properties or they do different like services. They can provide um, assistance to developers, like a lot of different things. So that's one avenue that happens. Some of them do have, uh, mill levies. We don't think that would work in Clear Creek County. So that's pretty much not on the table. But the other thing that we could do is probably use Prop one, two, three to fund it for a period of time. And it would also require like a municipal contribution at first. But the goal would be to create an organization that could start doing this work and then have them be self supporting after a period of time.
Is is this the same, um, organization that Amy had proposed at that last meeting?
Okay.
So.
We've already made a payment, have we not?
No.
Oh, okay.
We haven't even agreed to participate yet.
Right, it was at a work session.
Yeah.
And didn't get great.
But where you might be coming up with that is there's two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to work with.
Yes.
Uh, you know, just trying to get this thing up and running. A hundred and sixty five came from the IHOP grant. The county kicked in thirty and, uh, the city by the springs kicked in thirty.
Yes, that's what it was.
But but also that that particular group was asking for the person that was going to oversee it. I think the bill is going to be for that job, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, let me, let me use it because that's not a hundred percent exactly true.
Okay, good.
Let me kind of explain where we're going with this idea.
That's all right. We're just.
Well, you guys are getting ahead of me. And so what I, what we need to do, and I'm just speaking frankly here, is we don't have anybody that can all time quarterback this issue, and there is frankly no organization in this county that's capable of fixing the housing crisis right now. We need an organization with an expert at the lead that can actually fix the problem, or it's just going to get worse. And we need to think about how we're going to do that right now. It's time. And the way that I have been thinking about this organization that I think that really benefits the city is that we have the opportunity to say, if we do want to participate in it, these are the goals that we we tie our participation to, whether that is we have monetary goal where we say we will not exceed X dollars, whether that is we want to do X, Y, and Z to preserve housing in a community and character in our community, or we want to pursue these activities which we think will make this organization self supporting. This is a good way for us to say, kind of to your point, that if we don't think that the county is doing everything that they could do to address housing in the best possible ways, this is our way that we can create a collaborative government kind of agency that can kind of work on those issues and build policy that supports our goals in the city. Um, it's true that they can do a mill levy, they can do, they have a lot of powers in statute, but we have the ability to say what and how they do that. Like, we don't have to give them the ability to go for a bond or anything like that. What has kind of been looked at as far as funding it is, is I, I think at the end of the day, what they're going to need is they're going to need startup money to get going. The county's applied for a grant for about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars through CDP AG that could fund part of the first year. But it's likely that we're still going to have to think about municipal contributions to it. I don't know for sure what that contribution would be because there's a lot of different ways we could do this. One, we could hire consultants, which would be relatively cheap on the upfront and try to get them to help us with some of these projects. The problem is, is that contextually, they're not going to have all the same information that we have about housing. They may also try to fit things that fit in Denver into Clear Creek County that, you know, maybe don't work. And sometimes, I think we all know consultants can be just as expensive, if not more, than than hiring somebody. The benefit to hiring a full time staff member, which Amy was trying to say when she was here, and to be a hundred percent fair, I think she got a little abbreviated because the session before that had gone long.
Of course, yes.
Um, we could hire somebody who's a Clear Creek County person who understands what housing means in Clear Creek County, who understands where Big Horn sheep belong, where people belong, and who understands like the actual complexities of accessing water and things like that here and like, you know, our workforce, who our workforce actually is. And these issues like where, you know, you can't just look at AMI and say, oh, everybody makes sixty two thousand dollars. It's not true.
But can I ask something? It it seems to me, after being on planning for sixteen years and county planning for a couple of years in there too, that these studies have been done and the land has actually, the land available to build has actually decreased.
Yes.
So my, what what I'm trying to to like weigh in my brain is the value of spending money on a team or consultant versus the known areas in the county that are available and ready to build on, and if we have any interest in them already. I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it just, we, I don't think it takes a middleman for us to know that since it's empirical knowledge. It's been out there and that land hasn't been developed in the last twenty years.
I would turn that around a little bit and say that answers your question right there because we've had that land for twenty years and nobody's been able to take it across the finish line. We need an expert who can get funding and has a wherewithal from a planning and development perspective to get those projects that we can do done. We know we're never going to have twenty thousand people.
We we have county planners. I mean, we have people working in that.
Their planner isn't working on development, though. They are working on land use cases across the county.
Right.
And our our housing person is like less than or half time and not even benefited position. So they have to be able to go out there and get these funds, which we're talking about a complex project right now. I mean, we're talking about twenty to thirty million dollar projects. And that's where we have a challenge because they have to be able to access private activity bonds and find developers that may be appropriate and be able to write these Lytech applications, which are significant and difficult. And right now, we've got like a lot of different people spending an hour or two of their time working on these things. We need somebody who can really take it across the finish line. And maybe to your point too, maybe we don't need that. And I'm, I I could see that too. I think that's a a reasonable.
I'm not saying that that some of the people that are interested in doing this are not highly qualified. I'm just I'm worried about spending money after good money after good money after years and years. I mean, to me, it's like, I personally think that developers aren't knocking our door down to be in this county. It's simply because of our location. You know, location to Summit, location to Denver. Um, somebody owns property in this county that is developable, whether or not we we agree on whether that. Whether or not we we agree on whether that is, you know.
My concern with that though would be, could we do deed restricted? I don't want to see market value be that you.
You're talking about this in what this expensive. Yeah, that's the other.
I don't want like, you know, where do we hear lots of complaints? Look at all those buildings over by Georgetown Lake. I think they look fine or whatever. But they're really expensive. I know people who live there. They're like two thousand dollars for, you know, a one-bedroom or a studio. I don't, I don't want to be any part of supporting that kind of.
Well, I think. Ever. I don't know that we have any, I mean. With the bathroom here in town costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to remodel. I mean, I I don't know that, how do how does anybody, how does a team of people dictate the the amount per square foot? Of a build? I don't, how do you do that?
Well, because that's the whole point of this is that if the market was able to provide housing that could meet the needs of our community, it would have already happened. It can't. That's the only reason that government should intervene in the marketplace is if the market cannot meet equilibrium on demand. And that's what's happening in Clear Creek County because everybody who comes here is building. For profit essentially, or building to because because housing is a valuable asset and that's okay. That's what should happen. But if we're going to put government money into a program, it should be to deed restrict housing and that's how you do that. You say, I have access to all this money and resources. In return for that investment, you are going to make housing affordable to this segment of my population that needs housing. And it's never going to be like, we're never going to be providing housing for people making, you know, like seventy. We're talking about teachers and firefighters and police officers who are making, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars. Even, yeah, even a hundred percent AMI for us goes a long way because you're talking about rents under two thousand dollars at that point. If you look at where the market is right now, you look at a. Twenty-three hundred dollar apartment, there's a couple of them out there. Not renting and it's really because of the market here and who you really need to cater to. And you know, there's other things too that we've talked about that planning commission has been working on. One is like dormitory cellhouse. We have a lot of folks that might benefit from a kind of a.
Five or six.
Housing, you know, like that.
Transitional rent.
And what you could do with a housing authority is you can establish goals. And based kind of to your point, it's not, it's not just another plan on the shelf. It's an organization that'd be. That would be working on these issues and and finding the funding and the developers that we need to make it come across the finish line. I think it's fair to say too, though, though, you know, EDC Economic Development Corporation. They sometimes have problems with funding because they get their money from what's called community development block grants. And they're a little bit limited in how their loans work. A multi-jurisdictional housing authority could be different because one of the things, another thing they could do is maybe they take over apartment building management. And they start taking fees for actually providing services to residents or they work with the state when we have issues with mobile home parks that are not in compliance or whatever the issue may be. There's a whole host of services they can do. And kind of what what I did in my staff report, my. If we want to move forward with this and I I realize I'm kind of arguing the plus for this, but really this is a council decision. I know it's. A really important one that we do it right and that you guys are comfortable with what we're doing and it fits the needs of the city. But one of the things that we could do if we want to pursue this and kind of negotiate out a path where it works for the city and it works for everybody else. Is we could pass a resolution with goals and a resolution is non-binding. So it wouldn't be like we're locked into anything, but it would indicate our intent to like at least explore this option. And we could put goals in there. I put a couple in my staff report. About what they could say like about maintaining the character of the city, about affordable housing development potentially. Um they could be anything really and.
Because it would be a coalition of people from around the county, could we say, okay, we have this particular, let's just say we have three particular plots of land. That we want to look at first. This would be the highest density, the most payoff. Could we have that as part of their criteria that one of these properties has to be. At least ready to go with somebody interested in it in this amount of time. And I, all those things are variables. I'm just saying. Is that something that we can put out there?
I think in the, especially in the resolution to get that ball rolling, it would be great. And anything like that, if you guys want to do that, we could include because we just need to have a conversation starting point. Because, you know, I can listen to people tell me all day how much money the city should put in, but really I'm going to say what you say the city should put in. And so it just is helpful to say, okay, look. We know that, like, say it's like, I'm just throwing numbers out. It doesn't have to be this. But say it's a forty thousand dollar a year thing. We're not hiring a staff person for forty thousand dollars that can effectively address housing in the county. But if it goes into a greater effort of everybody else and we can actually hire somebody who can do this work and we have a full-time employee who can. Who's agreed to work closely with Idaho Springs staff and make sure, because the other thing I put in there is I think local control is really important here. It needs to go through our processes. But like we have somebody who can like kind of help us. Get these projects to the point where we where we can get it to Dylan to actually go through an approval process. I think it would benefit us because we're not going to develop a huge amount of space in the city, but we are going to. You know, there's probably a couple of places here and there that may develop and it would, it could potentially benefit us in that way.
Uh yeah, and by the way, I'm I'm not thinking that it has to be in the city for it to benefit us. Obviously, having people live in the county is going to benefit us. And and I I get your local control. I'm a hundred percent behind you on that. My only two cents on that is that there's got to be other counties. I mean, I'm thinking about where Salida and Buena Vista are. Who've done a masterful job of turning turning what was once, you know, I hate to say it was a ghost town twenty years ago. And they have all these very complex cool developments that are multi-use. There's different, you know, there's neighborhoods with.
They also do tiny homes too.
They do, well, I mean, the the particular neighborhoods I'm thinking of are are mid-range homes. They're not big in their townhouse style. But they've done a really great job of attracting those kind of homes to that area. And and also keeping their open space of which they have far greater than we do, far greater. But my point is that somebody headed that for them, but it wasn't just Buena Vista and Salida.
It's our, it's actually our consultant who did theirs.
Okay.
She ran their housing authority for thirteen years.
Yeah.
And they have a combined one, BB and and Slided.
Yeah, sure.
It's the same, actually, our IGA that that they have, we haven't started working on an IGA yet, but they've given us the IGA from that project. We've also looked at Grand County, just set something up very similar to this and Summit County has. Some organizations like this too, but it's not quite exactly the same, but there's. It's really kind of like a thing that's been going mountain communities because we just have. You know, we're not, we're just not the same. We have different needs to to be collective, I guess.
I actually like the idea when I look at your staff report, I prefer the idea of an employee. I like the idea that an employee has to answer to Idaho Springs and Empire and Silverplume and Georgetown and the county like. They don't answer just to one person. They have to answer to all of us, which means they take all of us into account.
They'd answer that they'd answer to the housing authority by design, so it wouldn't be.
Right, it's specific, but yeah, it would be to councils.
It would be that.
Yeah. To the board that everybody would have.
But they have to answer the board, but that board is answerable to all of the, you know, the entities that fund it and support it.
Well, that's the, that's the, that's the catch though. When you create a board. They are out there to decide for you. Like you're no longer giving them direction. You have chosen. The person that is giving you.
But if you want things to happen this year versus ten years from now. You have to function that way. You hire an employee.
Oh, sure.
Get in direction, oversight and scope as you go. Um and you don't, you don't have them going board to board, you go, what do you think? What do you think? Lay it like this, what do you think?
Right.
Right, so that's why the housing board makes sense. I've had this conversation with the current county manager from Imperial. All of it makes sense and but our one issue we have with our county, and I hate to say it this way, but. We've got great open space. If you look at the LDS church, awesome, no water. Um limited capacity on the existing surgery, if I just upgrade it. So that's our limiting factor. You get in places similar to BB and Salida. That have a greater quantity of groundwater than your well accessible water.
Right.
They aren't restricted by that what we are. So I think that that's where it comes full circle business community as far as what we can, what we like to develop. Versus what we can legitimately support as from a development perspective is our two entirely.
So you think that would be the first thing without a board that we should come to the conclusion of?
Yeah, I think that's all of it, right? And then if we look at like, we as a city have capacity, I think, to add.
We do, yeah.
Users to a point. There's probably a finite point where we will exceed our.
I think we, for what the water attorney says, we're not, we're not quite there yet.
No, no, it's not, it's not available. It's not how many acreage do we have available. It's just. How much we treat per day, how much we treat per day? And something fails, are we inclined in the threshold between?
Right.
Maxing out your capacity. And being in a safe place where you go, hey, if we break this on Tuesday. It's okay because we're only using eighty percent of our capacity. We need time to fix it.
Right.
And I know Georgetown did something similar to what they did and then. Empire's not there yet. They just put a new well in, for example. On the supplement, their water use. But they don't have that huge, they don't have the capacity to grow quite as much as everywhere else.
You're arguing my point though. Which is, why are we even, why are we even embarking on this if we have such a limited amount of water that we can? Um dedicate to development?
Well, it's not all about development either because the other thing that we know about. Clear Creek County is we have a lot of older housing stock that doesn't have the qualities. Necessary for people to age in place or necessarily to like live a healthy lifestyle all the time. We have problems. In a lot of that area. And one of the things the housing authority could do is say, hey, we know you don't have the money to fix your house up and you need to do this thing to be able to age in place. Why don't? We create a program where people can fix up their house, which maintains our local character and history. And like, so maybe a person could age in place there. Maybe they don't have lead pipes anymore. Maybe. We, you know, they need a stair lift to make that happen so that they can get these things. And in return. What we do is we say like, okay, well, maybe when you sell it, you sell it, you know, you try to sell it to a local or. There's you take a little bit less money because we gave you this this investment into your home. That's what uh they've been doing in Grand County and it's been working fairly effectively, especially, you know, they have more ski industry right there than we do, but. It's been a pretty good program for them.
So it's like a loan on the house that they pay back?
Kind of, or you can either do it like that or you can just say it's like a grant, but when you sell it, you sell it for a little bit less so that we can try to keep housing affordable. Or you maybe you sell it, Dylan has, I think, some experience with like workforce housing programs like that.
Deed restrictions, which some areas are famous for deed restrictions.
They'll pay up to fifteen percent for a deed restriction on the house. It says you have to sell it to a local. Uh and you use that for your down payment typically, you know, a million dollar home sense.
Or they say you sell a home, places and revenue, you sell for ten to fifty percent over. Urban market value when you bought. I think we have a lot of those. You worked over there. Well, my house is worth that many dollars. Yes, and you can sell for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per this piece of paper you sign. Get your loan to get into this home. That's why it's deed restriction. So there's, there's, that's where their housing authority comes in.
Explain that one more time to me. I'm sorry, I'm done.
So if I do deed, if I do deed restriction, for example.
Let's just say it's me, so I can put it in my.
So if someone gives you a house for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're going to allow you to buy a house for three hundred.
Okay.
But the caveat is. If you choose to sell that house at any point. You can make ten percent over over that three hundred.
And that's it?
Yeah, you can make three, you can sell for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You agree, we agree, and then you're like, man, I saved a huge amount of money and I can afford to get into this house.
Then you have to sell to someone in the same AMI, right?
So.
So who is that? That's motivating for first time buyers?
No, it's motivating to keep your housing stock. Um A completely full. But allow lower income households to have the opportunity to buy something within your community.
Okay.
There's a lot of ways you can structure it too, like it doesn't.
I'm not against it. I'm just trying to figure out what the motivation would be for for somebody.
If, say, I'm in that position. And and then I I want to sell the house and now you're in the same position I was in and you need, you want to buy a house. You can't afford the four hundred and fifty thousand for three hundred. Well, I'm in line to sell it to you. Which keeps it in that status. You sign the same agreement that I did and then subsequently when you sell it, it goes to somebody else.
So you lived in that house for twenty years and you walk away with nothing? Is that what?
Yeah, but the advantage to that, walk away with nothing is. I got into the house legitimately. I didn't actually, I shouldn't have qualified in the house.
You took your, you took your profits and then.
It's using the profit upfront.
The versus.
By having the opportunity to buy the house at a lower price and something I can afford. In a market in which I can't afford a home.
Yes, that hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm willing to sacrifice whatever that market increase will be.
Right.
For the fact that I'm not paying rent to somebody month to month, year to year.
And you're saving two hundred and fifty grand.
That's where deed restriction really comes into generating.
He only got it because he was at eighty percent.
So it's not like you're like.
He's going to sell it to you and only because you were in the eightier.
You qualify by income also.
Sure.
So that guarantees the percentage of your housing stock, if you have a deed restriction, say it's twenty percent of your total stock. So eighty percent is going for a million dollars a piece. Great. Summit County is a perfect example of this.
Yeah.
Well, they've got twenty percent, I don't want to break for this percentage, but it's pretty high. It's deed restriction. It will be that way for the duration of that building, once the building exists. Which allows. Even restaurant owners that. Don't have a bunch of disposable income could buy a house in in record return to the program because they qualify.
Interesting, okay.
So that's where this where it comes in to really maintain that.
What is the, just out of curiosity, what is the duration of time that people spend in? In a deed restricted home, out of curiosity, if anybody knows.
Probably ten years, I think, is probably the average.
So you've kind of saved money as you're going along and then you go and buy something that's.
Yeah, so in ten years from now, maybe I might just arrive, finish, I've got my masters and now I've got a big.
I've just never heard of this.
So I move on to something I can, I want a bigger house on the hill now. Well, there's somebody that might say, this waiting to get into a home that's paying rent every month. And we know what rents are, right? Right now, rent is way more than my mortgage.
Right.
Double what my mortgage is someplace.
Well, and the other benefit, like the. You you mentioned like you don't get anything out of it, but you do get housing for ten years or twenty.
Uh I I I'm just looking at it from my perspective today. I'm not looking at it my perspective when Doug and I bought in nineteen ninety-six.
But Kate, if you bought a house for three hundred thousand dollars that normally would go for four fifty. You're automatically saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the life of however long you're in that house.
You just don't get it back in your pocket.
Interest, yeah, you're not getting back your pocket, but you're not shelling out a higher, you know, a higher.
But theoretically, like hopefully through time, your job would.
Sure. And most people want to progress during that period of time and and maybe buy something. Not within the program.
Right.
You know, the goal is to like earn out of.
Earn out of, it it's a great idea.
Exactly.
Probably doesn't work in a place like Summit where it's more expensive to buy a deed restricted house, one-bedroom apartment than a home here.
Yeah.
Which is what happens to me.
It's insane. Yeah, that's insane.
Like market rate house is cheaper than a one-bedroom apartment, deed restricted.
Yeah.
But it's a very different, you know, it's like a different layer of.
Yeah.
We can also create different kinds of deed restrictions. It could be like a partial deed restriction or it could be like a limited equity thing or. You have appreciation.
I think that's, I I think it sounds like a great idea.
Well, if we have this housing authority, that means that we have the ability to build this the way that we want it and it can adjust. If we're like, oh, this isn't working. We need to, like, new fiscal year, we need to change some of our guidelines or, you know.
That's a really good point. The other thing is, I'm going to give you an example. It's not Idaho Springs. Silverplume deadset against having anything new in there. They want to have Silverplume be Silverplume forever. But they've got a lot of old houses that aren't great to live in too.
Yeah.
So you start taking some of that money, you make a bathroom that somebody can actually use, you start working on some insulation in buildings, make them a little bit more. You know, energy efficient. In the winter time, you're starting to do some real good stuff for people. And you're maintaining what they want for their community. Where we do the same thing in our community and do this, you know, we just start working on. You know, we we take our same housing goals and we just. Try to use the housing authority to bring the money and the legal and the expertise's expertise to the to the table. And that's ultimately what I think to your point, we can make it be whatever we want it to be. There's a. There's so many powers in the state statute. We're not going to use them all. And there's other things we can do to be creative and make sure it stays Idaho Springs at the end of the day. And I think that's what. We all would agree on is we want to make sure that there is something like that. It benefits the city. And if if money goes in, equal benefit comes back out. That would be the goal.
Jonathan, I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead.
You can, can you change the restrictions at any given point in time?
Yeah, pretty much. If if you put it on a deed, it becomes a little bit tricky. Like once you, like if you and me make a deal, I'm not going to be able to just break that handshake. Necessarily unless we agree again. But within that kind of boundary, you can like, you can do it, every deal could be a little bit different. You know, we might, there's even this thing called community land trust that some people do. And what a community land trust does is say, I own this land, the city does. We are, you know, we didn't build city hall and sell it in fifteen years. We're not going to build, if we're going to put our money into housing. We'll own the land and we'll let you develop it. You take all the money from it as a developer. You can still capitalize it, do all the stuff you do in finance.
And the shitty story.
Yeah, and then if we ever need new affordable housing, we still got a place to put it.
Got you.
And that's a, that's something we could do too.
Sure.
The other thing that I think it's Frisco's talking about doing, they have like a. Workforce housing development that's all workforce housing for ownership and they're talking about letting people buy themselves a lot of the deed restriction. So it kind of works in the same way where, you know, I can't afford a house, but I can buy in. Ten years later, I have whatever the hundred thousand extra dollars, I pay it back. And now it's market rate again, but now the housing authority that city has.
Isn't that what Riverbend is essentially, like in fifteen years, it turns into.
Could.
Current market value?
Yeah, it it's a little different, but it's like their their deal with the. With HUD basically lets them get out of it in this certain period of time.
Yeah, that's even after the fact too. That was a, that was a surprise.
They they have a sliding scale over there too where, so you may talk to some people that rent over there at Riverbend for. Something really low, you know, like five fifty a month, and you may talk to other folks that are paying twelve, thirteen hundred.
Right.
And it was just because that AMI went up to like a hundred and twenty and they have some people thirty, forty.
Yeah.
It's something that is a big thing in affordable housing policy is. People think that if we're. People think that if we're gonna, if we're gonna put money into housing, it should be for a permanent. Or at least long term solution, it shouldn't be for something that only lasts a short period of time, and we gotta really be careful about that.
I I agree, and unfortunately Riverbend didn't, that was a last minute change of rooming.
I agree with what you said about how if if development could have done this, it would have, and so this is when it's time for us to step in. Cause I really believe in like letting the market do what the market's gonna do, it's clear that the market doesn't give a darn about. You know, our forty percent that can't afford to live here or have to commute in here or can't afford to buy.
When you think about the impact on our economy, we, well, Mayor says pretty frequently, like we're probably running seventy percent of our. Our downtown right now, we have about a hundred million dollar economy. And so you think about that in terms of like roads and water pipes and even things like water rates, like what could we have water rates be if we were? If we were a little bit more robust in our our accounts of that spread across, there's some big tangible benefits in the city from. Making sure that our workforce can live here potentially.
Yeah, and if I can real quick, because we we all know there are employers here, large and small, that literally. Aren't open as many days as it'd like to be because they don't have employees or uh. You know, they they've got ridiculous signs on the door that say, please bear with us, we're short staffed and. So I'm saying if they're not firing on all cylinders. Then, you know, clearly we've we've got a real problem with people being able to live where they work, but also. Uh we're not collecting the sales tax that that we should be either, for the same reason.
Yes, if we move over to our materialist weasel side, we're not getting the sales tax that would be really great to have, because we don't, we can't have this business operating. At a hundred percent, you know, and I've talked to some of our business owners who are like, I can't wait for the four points to happen, because we don't have anywhere to put people.
Yeah.
And I and I don't wanna, I I would rather see this be a countywide municipal like. Entity built above our entities, I don't wanna see business based housing, I don't wanna see businesses be like, oh, we're doing the housing. I like, that makes my teeth itch.
Right, yeah, they, that shouldn't be.
No, but but that's where we're heading, because businesses, yeah, businesses are like, we need a place to put our folks, okay. I get that. So they're doing their thing, I don't wanna, I don't know, I would rather.
I get what you're saying.
If I can back up on this, uh if you go to the little town of Mintern. They have a really nice new post office. And above it, there are seven apartments.
Yep.
And the only way you get in to one of those seven apartments, you must work for the city.
Yep.
So here's a prime example of what you're talking about, because they kept with a revolving door. And uh folks might, you might be able to attract them off season. And then when ski season hit and everything's fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred a week, then, you know, they couldn't keep people, so this is one. One of the fixes where the city actually went in and invested.
Yeah, I'd like to see like deed restricted, some of these apartments, deed restricted forever, like. I I don't, because we're always going to need people that are here from a transitional standpoint, we're always gonna need the people that work downtown, work at servers, work as service industry.
Sure.
Like, I don't see that going away.
There are ways to create. That could be, that's a possibility, and that's something that I think like when. Right now, we're at the level that what I would really was hoping to see direction on. More than anything else is this resolution that we're willing to have this conversation with everybody else in the county, because we've kind of got to the point where we need to. Come up with some real. Meat on the bone about what this would be and what our goals for it would be, and then what.
Is this your point number four?
This is kind of where I was going is that I would really like to, this resolution would be helpful. From my perspective to establish some goals that Idaho Springs thinks are important, I've been told. Um by the other municipalities that such a resolution would be helpful, because we just need to, everybody has similar thoughts to us about about. Concern wise about what this does, A, that's not like Kate said, a plan on the shelf that doesn't do anything. B, that we actually need it and provides value, you know, we need to make sure that those things happen, and what I would really. What I was hoping for was direction that maybe that we could bring a resolution for your consideration at our next meeting, that might um. Might elaborate on some of those goals and and see if you guys would be interested in entertaining something like that.
Would everybody be all right with that?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Okay. And just so I can be clear, I'm.
Okay.
Direction wise, direction wise.
Oh, I don't know, Jenny, can you hear me?
He's driving.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with the goals I had in my staff report, and I wanna make sure that I capture what you're saying, cause it's.
Computer died, sorry.
Yeah, but I didn't have one about land development per se, but if I put something to the effect of that we need to establish priority project or two. From the beginning and immediately work to develop them, would that kind of meet with you?
I I think that'd be great, and I and and I'm, I I don't, I, you've done a great job of explaining, explaining this where the the team before did not have enough time.
Yes.
Okay. To do that, and I do appreciate you, and the 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 whole thing is much clearer to me, so I do see the value. Okay.
In multiple different ways, so I don't want you to think I'm I'm anti the project.
Well, I.
Or the program.
You're getting really helpful feedback, and I. I'm gonna be honest with you, this project's been my baby for five years and I feel very strongly about it.
I feel that.
But uh I uh. I want to make sure that if Idaho Springs listeners are participating, that A, we're comfortable with the ideas that we're talking about, and B, like if we do decide to put money into the pot, that. We think that the return on investment is worth it, so I don't want to make anybody feel like we're cornering. Into a certain choice here, so if there's anything else I should add. About language here, I can, this resolution's gonna be used by all the municipalities, so.
I guess you can give us, I I mean, if if it. I kind of directed towards me a little bit, and I don't mind being that person that says. Maybe have a timeline that says, you know, by this many months or years. We'd like to see a result.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
I mean, I would actually like to see a measurable, you know, here's where our project, I mean, we we all know that construction can sometimes be a real pain in the neck.
I pay that.
But by, you know, two years in, what does that look like? Even with all of our construction challenges or whatever, what does that look like? Cause I would like to see measurable, actionable goals.
Well, and I I would just inject, you know, the state uh tries to have some feet to the fire on this as well. That's why you have uh goals that you must meet. Like if we were to take one twenty-three money. Then they expect uh some fruit out of that in five years, where are your units?
Yeah.
Right, so they'll they'll give us, uh you know, the goal of like, we knew we were two hundred and twenty-eight uh housing units short. Uh and they say, all right, well, you need to have twenty-seven. Uh affordable ones up and running, right, in uh next year, for example. So they do have goals.
I think it's good though for us to have goals that are not just state driven, like I I think that's important, it shouldn't just be. Another entity, this entity itself should have stated goals that it's committed to making.
I put historic preservation is a big goal, and I know that there's places where that's created and places where it's not as good. But I think that character in Clear Creek County is one of the things we always talk about, and we have opportunities to still meet housing goals without. Making this place different than it is today, like we can. We can grow in a way that's smart, I guess is what I'm trying to say, and so I I was thinking something like that to get to kind of the point you're saying. Um but if there's anything specific that you guys want me to include in the resolution, I'm happy to put anything in there.
Are you talking about keeping it looking like the mining town?
I would like to keep up, like, you guys know, historic preservation is one of my babies, and I really don't wanna see. What brought me and a lot of other people to this county, if you didn't grow up here or brought us back to the county, go away, like I don't want us to turn into. I'm not gonna say any of these, other mountain communities where they've lost a lot of their character, like I feel like our character is, and it's not just. Idaho Springs, Georgetown has it, Empire has it, Silverplum has it, I don't wanna see the character go away, so I think. Adding some kind of historic preservation or character preservation, I don't know how to word that, is important too.
The other one I wanted to ask about, Jimmy, I've heard you talk about this before, like your guys being able to live and work here. I think that's an important thing for our businesses to be able to say, you can live and work here, and I didn't know if you guys might want. Like a goal like that, that we really want to prioritize local.
It's a national goal.
Yeah.
I mean, the workforce nationwide is saying, I wanna be able to live and work.
Yes. I would a hundred percent support that.
Certain amount of miles coming out of it.
Here and you should be able to live.
I I think we're we're probably unanimous on that, aren't we?
I have one more thing to throw in there too, so. And that. There are a lot of people watching us, so I don't wanna like open a can of worms, but. There's a couple project, there's a couple properties, and one of them specifically is in Idaho Springs. That has, and I'm sorry, I'm really cloudy, guys, I can barely hear myself talking, my head is so stuffy, so if I'm yelling at you, please just like signal. Um there's a couple properties that, one specifically in Idaho Springs and two other ones in the county that are. Homes that have been there for a long time, that were not meant to be homes for as long as they have been. Can we have some sort of? Like an initiative that maybe some of those properties, like the Riverbend was, looked at for redevelopment in the future as a priority. And I'm not trying to dehome, or I'm not trying to take away homes from anybody, I'm trying to find affordable hu- housing that's better than what exists right now, I know where you're going.
It's gonna be better.
Better.
It can't just be like, it can actually be better, yeah.
But but yeah, better, well, Riverbend is much, much better than what was there before, so I'm very excited for that, cause I was on that.
Well, you know, it's funny, people.
But I don't know how to say that any other way.
I know where you're going, I can.
Okay.
I think your goal is to replace existing housing with more units of higher quality. That that goes in line with, you know, cause if you look at.
Sure.
I'll pick on any, I'm I'm not saying it's.
It's very difficult to say this out loud.
But you know what, I'll say it aloud, I really will. If you look at what happened, we had fair homes that were that were bought while they were making, building the highway, hiding our tunnel, all this stuff, right? Workforce housing, originally designed for that, gold camp in the camp, in the in the town. Uh low income housing, workforce housing.
Right, that's all it was.
Shortly, right, it's all it was, now it's not.
Right.
Subsequently, those places have been bought by senior developers.
Mm-hmm.
Um and now we have a level of uncertainty with with people that live there going, well, what's my offering gonna go to next year?
Right.
And they're not being maintained.
They're not maintained, a lot of these houses, the new a new trailer in one of those places might be nineteen eighty-five.
Right.
Yeah, if you look at the, right?
And they're date, I mean, they could be in history.
Most of them are, those nineteen sixty to nineteen seventy-four.
But there's nothing more affordable.
But that's their only choice, right?
That's like.
So, well, right, but you can't call it affordable house.
And and some of them, some of them have more than one family living in it.
Cause there's nothing better than that.
Affordable house.
Because that's their only choice for more than one family.
Right, no, absolutely.
We're just perfectly honest, we have this conversation. So at the long, the goal of this is to provide those families, especially with. A viable choice of high quality housing that they can afford.
Mm-hmm.
So they're not living like cordwood, to the best of their ability every day, which is totally unfair down.
Mm-hmm. It is.
Yes, it is.
Right, that's a failure on our part over the last twenty-five years.
It's more than that. Silver River, Ben.
More than, more years than that, but I get what you're saying, yeah, right.
More years than that, so how do we, I think this is where the housing authority comes into, that's the goal. How do you develop alternatives? How do you improve?
I do not, that that's why we would hire somebody, that's that, yeah, that's why you're talking about.
That's where this is kind of really important to say.
To me, that's that's worth the money.
This is the goal, you tell us how we have to get there, what's available.
Right.
Well, I would like to see the goals reflect the fact that. Our median income is forty-two thousand dollars for forty, is it forty percent or sixty percent?
Sixty-two percent of Idaho Springs best makes less than forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
That's if they're working three jobs and they can.
Yeah.
They can do everything, can, looks like, that's that's a problem.
Forty-two thousand doesn't get you anywhere, so I wanna see us focus on housing for that, like, for that. Group of folks that cannot afford anything but maybe a trailer that's a nineteen sixty-five and they have sewage problems, I mean.
Yep.
Uh that's awful, and that's that's a failure on our part.
And that's where the housing story comes in, we say, okay. Your rent is set by your income, we have, you following these programs available to you. And we don't program the county, right?
No, we don't.
You've got an income problem, you've got a housing problem, and we've got no options to help you. By design.
Well, it sounds like that's more of a priority then.
So I think all of this comes into, comes into the program where. You can get help with your existing home. You can get help getting into housing. Um you'll have better housing options, right, and Riverbend is, yeah, it's HUD and that's great. But in reality, that's, that solves a huge problem for a whole bunch of people.
Way way more than had lived there on that property.
And that really nice. Inspected them before.
I think it was eighteen, eighteen units.
But we have, we have eighty-eight compliant housing in Idaho Springs. Other than the senior center, we don't, and Mr. White, we don't have that anywhere else.
My house is definitely not eighty.
Right, but we have, that gave us that option for a lot of them, and that needed just that option.
Yeah. Yeah, I love that. But I think that's a, that would be a priority then over development, free development, yeah.
That becomes a priority for us, and I think it's a priority even talking to the county.
Absolutely.
Of where they wanna go with. The same conversation that we're having with other sites that are in the county and.
There's at least seven.
Approximately, yeah, but.
I like the idea though too, that this housing authority could manage property, because then it's it's a. It's an authority that manages the property and make sure that all of the people that live there and everybody that might be there is addressed and taken care of in the same way.
Yeah.
Totally fair.
Well, I gotta, I gotta tell you, one of the things that.
That that's right there, yes.
Yes, exactly, good, what you're saying.
I have been really focusing on making sure the consultants know and the other members know that this is not gonna be funded through a tax, we're never gonna get that through.
Nope.
We also can't just rely on municipal contributions, like maybe what I've been thinking is a startup fund, like for a certain period of time to get them running. Because a housing person that really knows their stuff is gonna be, you know, that there's gonna be an expensive. There are ways to make such an organization self-supporting through the ends of programs you're talking about, and that's where it needs to go, that's what this needs to be, it needs to carry its own weight. And I think we can do that, we just gotta, we have to be able to have a little bit more in-depth conversation than we have now. And these goals that you've given us, I think I can make, I I can bring back a resolution that I think kind of says what you've said. And then for your consideration at our next meeting, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
I've got one more thing though that I wanna add, um so this is an approach that I've decided to start taking with. All things that I start to agree on, whether it's in my personal life, my work life, or my council life. I wanna know what kind of problems could arise from creating such a group. And it not being successful, I wanna know what is the dark side of doing this?
Yeah.
So, I mean, not that you need to answer me right now, but what I mean is. Let's just say we hire a group, we hire a a director. And this person starts. Getting in cahoots with developers, is that something that could possibly happen? Are they gonna take kickbacks, are we gonna be, or somehow the county gonna get slated in some way?
Well, it's like a warehouse.
Anyhow, but my point is, is I just wanna know what could possibly go wrong, really, and so that we can make sure that we're always observing that that is not in fact happening to us. And somehow that we can be responsible.
Well, and we, uh, but we still, but we still oversee that as council, correct, John?
No, not as a council.
We saw her was appointed, right?
Uh as a, as a housing authority.
Well, I know, but we still hold somewhat of a authority over that, correct?
Yeah, well, and I'd wanna make sure that we have some triggers if we have a big concern, cause that's one of the reasons why.
Sure.
But when, why we didn't want the county to run the housing authority anymore, and even the county doesn't want to for the same reason, we wanna be able to have a. Like a.
Nobody wants all that spoke.
Yeah, everybody, this needs to be a. If it if it's gonna work, it needs to not do that, and so we need to make sure that we're really cognizant of what it takes to make sure that doesn't happen. And I think it's really, a lot of it like. Comes down to, they need to be, like I think the executive director of whoever it is needs to come to council and make reports and have. Goal plans that are established with Idaho Springs, kind of like what's supposed to happen at EDC, Lindsay's supposed to work with each community, and she does. But you know, there's no reason that person couldn't come and say, look, these are the city of Idaho Springs goals, these are what we've done, this is how we're spending the money and why we think it's effective.
Right, yeah, we could make it easier on them, too, because it is gonna be a small group, we could say, the third Thursday of every fourth month, somebody from each entity goes and meets with this person, so it's all one day and one job, but I'm just trying to make it easier on them.
Right, yeah. I want, yeah, I wanna make sure we build that into the agreement, because and the other thing I wanna do is, I think this first version of it, we should put a time limit on it, like five, like five years, whatever it is, give them a chance to be successful, cuz there's gonna be
Right.
low-hanging fruit, there's gonna be things that are hard, but we should say, look, here's, here's the time we're willing to commit to this organization, let's reevaluate it in a couple of years here, and make sure that this is something we wanna keep doing, because it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to continue if it doesn't work.
Sure.
So it won't be like a special district where I would appoint the council or you and I, and then, well, we, you know, get the majority of the votes. Yeah. I've been fighting for local control on this whole thing. And then, and that's that's the end of it. Yeah, I I want this to be local control, just like city council is in Idaho Springs, and maybe, yeah, this body might have like bigger goals than just our goals. But if it's gonna happen in Idaho Springs and our money is going to it, it needs to be accountable to council.
Agreed.
You guys have any other questions about M J J? Okay, so, a couple more things really quick, block fifty-seven project, that's the football field project. Uh, I just wanted to give a quick update on it, they're pretty close to breaking ground, they're just kind of finalizing stuff for building permits. That's gonna be about a hundred and twenty units of housing, they're ranging from about thirteen hundred right now for a studio to a three thousand dollars for a four-bedroom unit, um, with the intention of that being like a shared living space, um, it's, that's about, depending, they're pretty close to a hundred and forty percent A M I, it's market, it's basically market-rate housing, it's nice housing, it's gonna be good, but they they are positioning themselves as just market-rate housing essentially.
I thought that was supposed to be, though, like, less expensive to facilitate some of our public service.
Uh, yeah, six.
Well, now, so they have eight units that are dedicated to teachers, and that's a good thing, and that's also a number we get credit for on Prop one two three, which is great. So, at the end of the day, we're already at sixteen, which is not too shabby for, you know, most communities haven't started their numbers yet. But where this is an interesting project is, is that we have had an evolving situation with the EPA over the last year. And I'm, it's a pretty complex situation, but essentially what's happened is EPA would like to create what's called an operable area for what they call waste rock. Um, waste rock is a term that isn't well-defined in their guidelines, but essentially it means any rocks that aren't where they're supposed to be in Clear Creek County. And so their intention is, is like mine waste, and I know Jeremy is like expert level on this conversation, so if I say something wrong, let me know. But, uh, basically, what they're trying to do is say, you know, we don't want kids licking lead out of mine waste, essentially. Um, we don't want pregnant women to be exposed to lead, we don't want any of those negative impacts from lead in our community, and we also know that Clear Creek County does have like a volcano underneath it, and that heavy metals do come up out of the ground just naturally here. Um, and it's it's a problem, and I think we all can agree that we don't wanna live on lead, so that's that's kind of a given. Now, where this has gotten complicated is that there's an operable unit of a superfund site in Clear Creek and Gilpin Counties, which is a four-hundred square mile area for the watershed, because mostly, like, places like the Argo, so water will filter through the mine and it brings metals out. The superfund site cleanup area, which is the water treatment facility at the Argo, is one of the most successful in the country at removing heavy metals from water, which you can tell just by looking at Clear Creek, it's not brown anymore. That's a really good thing for our community, we like that. Um, what they're trying to do is say, take that cleanup effort further, and they're saying, look, we've got all these these old waste rock piles from mining for that are hundred years old or whatever, in some cases not that old, we wanna make sure they're clean and that your kids aren't gonna die from being on them. So, for the last year or so, they've done a little bit of community engagement, and they have done a very small amount of testing to determine whether or not lead is actually a problem on these piles and what should be done about it. Well, right now, they are operating as though we have what's called a record of decision for this new operable unit that says that there's basically liability for lead on properties with waste rock, and that property owners are required to clean it up, which is, you know, not a terrible thing on its face. The problem is, is that there's no record of decision, and there's no quantifiable evidence that there is a lead problem in Clear Creek County. Four points, when they originally built their funding structure, they're what's called an opportunity zone fund, and an opportunity zone fund is basically a a tax um, entity that was created a few years ago, where if you have a capital gain, you can put it in one of these funds, which can be invested in a community for a community good. And then, if you hold it in that fund long enough, you get a break on on what your capital gains tax would be. So, four point six advantage of that to do really good work in communities, and they do it all over the state, they work in Grand Junction, they work in, I think they got a project in Montrose, too, and like some places like that, but this project was intended to do that, cuz Idaho Springs is an opportunity zone. They started this project with a much smaller budget than they have now, also intending to get what's called Brownfield's funding, which is a funding source for a site that might have had a gas station on it or something like that, but it's a way you can do cleanup on a site and get a little bit extra money from the government. Well, when they put that application in, they triggered this whole thing because we have no rock for this new operable area on the superfund site. And it made, but basically what happened is EPA forced them to go through this whole extra process that was fairly significant and very expensive, and lasted almost two years, and is still not fully complete because they wanted to make sure that the site didn't have any liability, and it's basically.
There's still no record of decision from EPA.
Not yet, there's like a shape file that shows the new area on EPA website, but it's not determined, but they had to like meet higher standards, so the only other site that's ever had to characterize a site, which is like looking at lead, as stringently as four points was Rocky Flats, and it was extensive and expensive.
That's not true.
Well, they made them like fully.
What's, what's, I'm sorry, I'm I'm not over, but I'm over.
Okay.
So, Brownfield is a grant program, so they they made a decision to try to go after grant, state cleanup grant money. Right, so, let's start with, they made a decision to go after a grant opportunity, they thought they was would be money for their investment, helped also their job. Once you do that, there are certain triggers, you, that, and it's more than lead, it's lead cadmiums, it's all of it. Lake County is the poster child for for this program, um, because they have all of the above everywhere, including in people's front yards. Like, we are in a situation that that they did. So they triggered this by applying for this grant, and when you apply for this grant, they go, okay, what are your levels? I'm gonna test it for levels, sat right there and told us, have you done any testing? Nope. What's gonna go, that's the pay, they're figuring it out, unfortunate. So then they say, okay, test, well, testing is huge, it's it's number number of holes over over the, by the space and different depth, and then they're looking for um, all of the heavy metals and and associated things that came out of mining, especially, the processing and and reaching to mine tailings and all that stuff. So, yeah, they're coming to the end of that program, um, which is unfortunate, they had to go through all that, but they still made a business decision to pursue funding, maybe ahead of doing the research of what that funding. Reason, I take, I take this pretty personally, cuz I've worked on a whole bunch of Brownfield projects, it's an amazing program, and it helps communities out more than you could ever put dollar value on, particularly with kids. They did that, on top of that, we have an EPA, we're in the, Lake County's already had all this, this Lake County went through this restudy.
Yeah, we're a superfund.
For a superfund, probably in the late eighties, early nineties, they started this progress, now we're, so we're behind, now we're in Clear Creek County. So, when they didn't lay counting and sort of, they go to you, I'm a homeowner, they say, hey, can we test in your yard? See if you have any metals, does my yard have any metal, like guarantee it does, right, I'm sitting on my hill.
You think so?
Oh, oh, yeah, I know him.
Yeah.
But they did, this is leadville, and then they came back and said, okay, these homes all have heavy metals in the yard, this is how we're gonna mitigate it, they went through and they put, replace the soil in the yards. Now we have a barrier between the existing contaminated material and and what, this is what kids are playing on. They capped the mine here, and they were gonna, they didn't put parts in because they couldn't, the cap still tested above the thresholds. It does, it is all the way through, some of them, you go down in the B B D and Salida, and it's all the way through the state. Well, we're just a little behind on them getting to Clear Creek County, now we're in that study phase, if you read the study, it's about a lot of the focus. And it's a voluntary thing, they can't come into property, if you're wanting to keep property tested, A, you know what your levels are, and B, it puts you in line, when they do come up with a solution for that and funding for that solution, you're eligible for that, if you're willing to do that, so we're in that phase of the superfund. But we're beyond the water treatment phase, um, we still have a lot of mine tailings that need to be capped, if my tailings, if it's flat, and water can sit on it, the water leaks through it, then that enters the waterway, so that can be a simple reshaping the tailings so water doesn't, water runs off. That might be the mitigation strategy for some of the harder to get to tailings, it was in Lake County. But we're in that phase now, and it's unfortunate, to a certain degree, that this program got heavily delayed for that, because then this program, I think this development having housing is is needed in the community in a big way. But I think we also need to remember, this isn't government coming down on them in a arbitrary way, they've initiated some of these paths through their actions, but now they're, of course, unfortunately, they're hitting it at a huge financial burden because of it.
Sure.
Well, I was in training, they held them to a rod that doesn't exist, and they made them crush the rock finer than, like, there's been some things that have been different at this site.
Well, there's there's the technology seems like if you, you say, okay, we have a soil sample, we need it crushed to this average size, which allows us to run it through the testing journal, run the tests, that's been experienced with that other sites, too, where what what they thought was good in, say, nineteen eighty-five, actually was probably missing a percentage of those, and it'll probably work.
There's the fact that we're a superfund site, also, you'd like a little trigger, like, say.
It's automatically triggered, cuz it's the Clear Creek Watershed Superfund Site, and they say, so the water being treated, the treatment facility treats the water of the Argo, also treats the, all the, kind of the Big Five, for example, right?
Right.
Sitting in the same exact facility in Lake County, it treats the Zach Tunnel and all the mine drainage, um, Climax Mine treats all the mine drainage on their property, uh, U Red Mine treats all the mine areas on the U Red property, which before is City of Golden Watershed. I hate to say the EPA is behind a little bit, but I think about a hundred and fifty years of destruction, and they're trying to catch up on it.
Doing the best.
Right, do what they can with with within the confines of the EPA, and now it's come full circle, and they go from Clear Creek Watershed.
Yeah. Hopefully, it'll get off the ground.
On this project, they didn't find any heavy metals on this site, so they are through largely the EPA process. And now, what they're trying to do is look at their funding, which has increased because of just inflation and just the cost of the of the work and everything, and so what they've asked is if the city would be interested in participating in the project in exchange for de-restrictions, kinda like we just talked about. It could be any number of de-restrictions, it could be all of them, it could be like a smaller number, depending on how much we would be potentially interested in participating. Um, the reason that we're bringing this in the staff report is just there might be a couple of benefits to the city, one, it would allow us to meet all of our Prop one two three requirements, so that we'd be kind of off the hook for providing those for the next three years, it would create that de-restricting, how's we been talking about, and maybe get us down on the, you know, get some more affordable units there. Um, it helps, you know, with all the things we just talked about, basically, making sure that we have places for people who live here and work here and all of that. Um, as far as funding sources, we've always talked about development being its own way, but there is a public good here, and so we did look at a couple of potential opportunities. One is, is that our ARPA dollars, which is American Rescue Plan, we have about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars left from COVID nineteen, and we have to spend it by twenty twenty-six or give it back, that money isn't earmarked for any project right now, and it could be used for this project, and that's not really coming out of any city fund, really, it's just money that we were given. So that could be one of the sources of money that we use, I also talked to Paul a little bit, and one thing that we could also do is consider allowing them to pay their tap fees later, not to skip them, it's still be on the hook for everything, but they could potentially just delay that payment, which would allow them to capitalize the project quicker and begin construction.
Can we, like, spread that payment out over the course of, like, five years?
I think we could, I think we could kind of do it however you guys want, but that would give them, maybe, between the two, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Yeah, and they could just get moving, the other thing is, there's this stronger communities grant that we could apply for, we applied for it already, and we were the first group out in the finals, but it's up to four million dollars, and we could probably figure out a way to use that money, too, but the problem with that is it doesn't come until probably August, so it would be, um, it would take some creative, fine, we'd have to be creative, and so we wanted to ask you about those three opportunities.
We don't have anything totally honest here, is there anything else that that ARPA money, you guys were going, hmm, maybe we could put it there?
Sure, today we got, we got a grant for the Matty Dam Project, so that project is pretty much moving forward this summer, there's something called the C W C B, which is the Colorado Water Board, basically, and we have a grant application for another four hundred thousand dollars coming in March, so four hundred and forty thousand from that, and then this DOLA grant. So that project, by and large, is mostly paid for, um, we've got Virginia Canyon, Virginia Street Project, Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street, we're both kind of doing phase one of those projects. This amount of money that we have in the ARPA dollars, it wouldn't necessarily do more for us than the state revolving loan fund would, which is also a grant. So it could go to those projects, but we have other sources of funding that could be used for that, too, that we already have applications moving forward on.
So then my question is, for this money, if we gave them four hundred and eighty thousand and then delayed their tap fees, say, just say, no, what what does our million buy us?
What would you like to have as the question?
Yeah, that's what we want authority to investigate, because I think we can all agree, if it isn't a good deal for the city, and we don't wanna do it.
De-restriction.
Well, and it may not de-restrict the whole project, you know, we may say, for X amount, then we want, I'm making numbers up, thirty units where people can qualify at forty percent of A M I to a hundred and twenty percent of A M I. You know, and if if, and and frankly, again, if if we're we're not gaining traction on this, and you know, we'll move on.
No, that's what I would want to see, like, like making a dent in our affordable housing shortage, that's what I would want to see. How that, how that shakes out, I don't know, but if we're gonna put this kind of rate, we're just, I mean.
Tap fees can still be prepaid, right? We're not giving that.
I don't wanna give those, those are, yeah, yeah. Tap fees come back, but, and I think there's other projects beyond this project, that potentially is money could help too.
Yes.
Other, like the senior, any other property or, you know, senior housing and all this other stuff that firstly, I'd rather see a portion of this go towards supporting senior housing and senior services than I would to this development. Because that's a huge, huge area that we're, oh, way overfunded, that's community. So I think.
We're we're overfunded?
Underfunded.
Underfunded, sorry.
Way underfunded, like.
Are you talking like this cemetery annexation that he talked about in his next piece?
Yeah, that is a.
That's a perfect example of designing some of this money towards even the development of that, surveys and the costs involved with that process. Make sure that that continues to move forward, this is to go that direction.
One thing we could do is the stronger communities grants up to four million dollars, that, and this Prop one two three dollars, we can use for the cemetery project, too. Basically, the, this gets a little bit complicated, but the the grant I'm talking about is to build what's called transit-oriented development, which is exit two forty adjacent is what it needs to be.
Right.
The cemetery project is like less than half a mile away, and I know we're talking about senior housing, so the walking is probably not necessarily as strong, but we'd still create a pathway. So we probably could call it G O D development, and if we were able to write a grant application for a larger project that include the senior housing and I I'm just wondering if we can come, if we can maybe.
I know where you're going.
Okay.
With just the, yeah, with just the tappies, could they move forward, would that be enough for them?
I think that we're talking about legitimately a one million dollar shortfall, I think that would get the projects across the finish line. I think there is a, I'm just, you know, just your pros and cons, the pro is, is that there's significant community good here, the con is, is that we don't know for sure where they are in their project, we don't know, like, how much these cost delays have have really mattered to their business model, and so I would be personally want to make sure that if this is something we wanna do, that A, we do a negotiation and make sure we do as much as possible, and B, make sure that if we have a contract that says, like explicitly, that that money is we're not losing money no matter what, kind of deal.
No matter what happens here.
Right, so.
The direction they say is, uh, is council okay with exploring, uh, this possibility? And like, you know, what it means, how many units, and what A M I work X amount of dollars.
Right.
Sure, yes.
I'd like to see what they have, what they come back with.
And if we did have an A M I restriction, is there a certain level you'd like to see on them, just to?
What is the forty-two thousand that we keep throwing out, what is that A M I compared to, like, Denver, which is the one that?
Yeah, Denver's seventy-one five.
So that's like what, uh?
If that's a fifty percent number, you're talking thirty or forty percent, which might be hard for them model-wise, but the other thing to remember is, like, even eighty percent A M I or above would help us because it would reduce pressure on other housing stock, so you're you're, it gets complicated, but I I guess that's the thing, is you wanna think about is what would be the acceptable number, you could even have a range, potentially.
I personally wouldn't wanna see anything above one twenty, I know the, while these, the, some of these programs, uh, let you go to one forty, but I'm saying one forty doesn't help our locals one little bit, you know what, that's called market rate.
No, it does not.
Right, and I agree with the mayor, I think it's, he pursued the threshold, I think the only caveat is, if we have forty left ARPA funds, I would say four hundred could be allocated to this, and eighty stays in in the fund for other projects, to now, cuz we're not talking like we have to spend this grant to now and end of this year. We've got a lot, and I think there's, I think maintaining an eighty thousand dollar fund of that, to help with the offset cost for all the other stuff that's going on,
We've got two and a half years.
Or even the housing authority or some costs associated would probably be grant managed, exactly, would be in our best interest.
Okay.
We're spending out the the line item completely.
Are you willing to consider the tap fees, too, if it's the right number, or you wanna?
Like tap fees, um, tap fees historically have been a great way to, you know.
Negotiate, yeah.
Say, hey.
I think tap fees are almost a, that's a better.
And even if you do, hey, we're not paying, you're not paying taffy, but you're paying a, whatever the inspection costs are for pulse time, when you have to inspect the taffy and install.
Well, we would have to.
You can pay this fee upfront, and everything else we will do accordingly to the schedule, totally in support of that.
Okay, well, that one would be tricky, cuz I don't know that we've ever forgiven a tap fee on any developer, ever, but let me finish.
We don't forgive, well, yeah. You you pay the front.
Right, yeah, I'm just making sure that we equitably get something, so that when someone says, I want relief on this, we can say, we're not believing you, we're we're getting something else, yeah, I just wanna make sure, that's all.
Yeah, then you pay it all over time.
Yes.
You you can't relieve them, you can't, you can't. No, he's exactly right, you never forgive them, cuz you never get money, you always wanna be safe, you pay the inspection fee, which is X per tab, for my staff time, but we have to pay the staff time.
Yeah. Right. Right, of course.
And then you say, okay, everything else, you just pay on this schedule, on these days, over this period of time, they agree, we agree, and at the end, we still get the tap fees.
Yes. Right.
So we don't lose money as a city.
But they don't need it upfront.
And no, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it'll be go different than any other developers, and yeah, we can spread that cost out over X.
We'll give you all, we'll give you whatever.
I would like to see what they, like, when you go to talk to them, what do they else, cuz they're gonna have their own ideas of what they have in mind.
Sure.
You have a, like, the time you'd consider for the de-restrictions, just because, like, thirty years or fifteen years or?
Well, we're not.
We can, you guys, I, I just like a ninety-nine year thing, but it just depends on where the sweet spot is, I don't know if we care.
I think the ninety line would be a hard sell for anybody.
Okay, well, it's like thirty, we're not investing, we're really legitimately not investing millions of dollars in this multi-million dollar project. But I think that timeline, that deep restriction time probably has to shorten.
I think in between ten and thirty.
Yeah, probably closer to ten by equivalent money. But even ten years allows us ten years of increased housing stock before it goes up the market to continue to work towards this problem. That we don't currently have.
By the way, these tax incentives that Jonathan was talking about, I believe uh, the trigger is ten years. So that investment group would, you know, hold this.
Yeah, and I thought that was part of like their, when they, because I was on council, when we voted on that, they had to do this with ten years, that was part, yeah, that was part of the tax.
They did tell us, you know, that, that was the commitments that they're making with their investors, so.
Okay.
Well, really quick, just the cemetery thing. We are working on the annexation right now of that land. And then we have a couple, like I said, a couple of grant sources that we can use to buy that property. And then what the intention would be is only senior housing.
Yes.
That's it.
Uh, the owner is very uh, passionate about that.
I would be a hundred thousand percent in favor of that.
And you know, for example, uh, the Mitchell White Building. Uh, there's a sad uh, joke that, you know, you'll never live long enough to get in there. Because it's senior housing, and they've got like, you know, forty people on the list. And, right, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just forever. So we are way oversubscribed. Uh, and uh, this frankly, uh, by the cemetery would be, uh, I think it would fix our county, not just out of the springs, but I think it would, it would help county seniors for decades.
What kind of, just a quick question, because I know we're like looking at time, but what kind of size of the, of a, so like how many?
We are, I glossed over this, but we're doing an analysis of city owned property right now about what might be feasible for housing. This is one of those sites, and what they're doing is trying to give us like a feasibility of what could fit. So we're not getting excited about some crazy that is not possible. That's one site that we're looking at, there's some of, like on the east end and on the west end too. But this one, it's probably at least an acre of land that could be built on, and so we have some other land with the city that's owned right there too, so we might be able to build a little complex. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would imagine at least eight or nine units, if not more, it just depends on you know, because that, that gets pretty hilly over there, so. But we have water over there and wastewater, it's on Chicago Creek Sand Station, so it's pretty easy site to build.
Senior seniors fourteen units, just to respect human size.
What is the one right here?
Each one?
There's like twenty something. Yeah, three, four, depending on the map.
Let's say nine units each floor, I've been on there, that's about right.
But even like ten to fifteen units would be huge.
They also want to put in like a wood shop, like workshop place where people can do some like, like industry kinds of things, so they can
Which would be awesome, yeah, okay. Some thumbs up on that one too.
All right, uh, do you need any further direction?
Nope, I hope I answered your questions, and if you have any more for me, just let me know.
All right.
Thank you for
I want to thank everybody uh, for their patience, it's seven oh two. Uh, let's take a comfort break for about five minutes, and we'll see you all then. Jimmy, have you had any sleep?
No.
I'm not a hundred percent. Stretch, it's for the good. Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about, I know my voice is not For my, like I've said that to you before.
Because I'm totally locked down. I tried this, and I tried
I can copy, Manny's got the
I dropped it off Friday, because I just, I tried to log it, it's still out.
It's like this is all about my work.
And then I tried to go to the year, that's what it was. Actually, luckily the roads were fine, but it was crazy, and the group, I'm going to go with half the years. It's so many.
Is that the, is that the kids driven, or is that the?
Really, when it's that young, it's a period of twelve, eleven, or two, or like when the older kids.
Maybe they don't have a way to get on the score, or something in that life is not as good as it should be, the facilities.
That's definitely, definitely what it is, which was already, you know, maybe. Well, you just, oh my gosh, seeing that again, I was just like, sitting in a chair like this, making me like, you can't touch, and I was just like, what?
No, uh, I, I tried to fix her laptop and accidentally locked her out of it, so.
I just have a new user name password, so, that was used to me.
Probably seven to eight on average. I joke, my deck one of them.
It's like almost time I go back.
Yeah, they're either in the dollar, in the driveway, whenever they are, or they're, they're behind the house, on the deck, paying out.
Matt and Carmen, can you guys hear us?
Which, I was like, who is? In a ways, I don't think it's gonna be, the current chief putting my out.
Not one section to you that we have you up front.
All right.
Not even joking, it's hot in here. Stuffy.
And dusty, but we're
I think that's, yeah, I think that's why I'm kind of
Just like looked up and
Amazing, all the
It's like the jazz on that.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, because it's a pretty tight building, considering it didn't lead down the road at one point.
You know what, I am the master, the obvious, over here, acting. No less. I know. Jeremy, thank you for all of your discussion about that, like brownfield.
It's very helpful.
Very interesting too.
I spent a large portion of my life supporting that industry and working in mining. So twenty-three years in mining, well, like probably fifteen of that working with the contractors that do that work.
Do you think the uh, the, the ARGO stuff stops at your property, or do you think it goes across the street?
No, I look at the historic tailings map, it goes basically to the edge of the road. And they push so much material
Up.
above my house, that I know I've got some under the house.
Right.
By design.
Right.
That should be the threshold, the historic mapping of that.
And then underneath those apartments, I imagine too.
Under the entire, the apartments is nothing but, that's a cap, that's a flat tailing.
Tailing site, yeah.
But they, they hold on.
Jonathan, no rush, but let me know when you're good to go.
So just about there, one moment. Okay.
Wonder, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, okay, uh, thank you, and I want to welcome everybody to the February twelfth, twenty twenty four uh, regular uh, council meeting, and uh, we'll call it to order at seven twelve. Uh, I apologize, we're a, a little late, the work session uh, just went a little long. We will start off with roll call, please.
Lisa Manipole, here, Jim Clark.
Here.
Janine Mariani.
Here.
Kate Collier, here, Jeremy Jones.
Here.
Scott Pennell, Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here.
Uh, all please uh, stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Uh, we have an agenda before us tonight, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda for the February twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting.
Thank you, Lisa, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Janine, uh, any discussion of the agenda? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Does anyone tonight tell they have a conflict of interest?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Uh, just on the bills.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you, and duly noted, Jimmy, uh, anyone else? All right, uh, we will move on to approval of the minutes, uh, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Jeremy, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Kate, uh, any discussion of the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand to signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, and uh, we will move to approval of the bills, uh, to February twelfth, twenty twenty four, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills from February twelfth through February twelfth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Jeremy, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Kate, I'm sorry?
Mine is LA twenty.
Oh, yeah, oh, you know what, I need to make that correction.
You're right.
So, uh, pardon me, Jeremy.
I amend my, my motion to uh, approve, approve the bills through February twelfth, twenty twenty four, with the exception of the invoices from Allied Towing.
Thank you, sir, and uh, Kate, would you?
I will amend my, my second to another second.
All right, uh, well, thank you, uh, and any discussion of the bills? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Manipole.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes. And uh, finally, uh, do I have a motion to approve the allied towing bills uh, to February twelfth, uh, twenty twenty four, rather, I would like to make that motion.
I'll second.
And a, a second from Lisa, thank you, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Manipole.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Thank you.
And uh, do we have any public comment tonight, I wasn't sure if anyone had signed up. Last I saw was empty. Okay. And I certainly do not have our finance officer tonight, correct, okay. Uh, well, then I would like to move on to a public hearing and resolution. Uh, this will be for resolution number two. And uh, this is going to be a uh, resolution conditionally approving a ten forty-one permit for development in an area or activity of state interest within the city of Idaho Springs. And um, this hearing uh, will come to order, this is a public hearing before City Council Idaho Springs uh, to consider uh, the approval of resolution number two, a series twenty twenty four resolution conditionally approving ten forty-one permit for development in an area or activity of state interest uh, within city limits of Idaho Springs for certain improvements related to the western portion of the Colorado Department of Transportation Interstate uh, seventy, I seventy. Uh, Floyd Hill, the Veterans Memorial Tunnel Project. If there is uh, public comment or testimony, uh, they'll be sworn in, does not look like we have any. Uh, so the order of this public hearing will be as follows. Uh, we will have uh, applicant uh, testimony uh, in the city. And then we will have a public comment, uh, should there be any, and testimony. This hearing is now uh, declared open at seven seventeen.
And, and you'd like to start with the city?
Oh, thank you, Dylan, yes, please.
Okay, well, for the record, Del Graves, Community Development Planner, um, as the mayor mentioned, this is a ten forty-one review of the C dot project, um, of the I seventy Floyd Hill, the Veterans Memorial Tunnel. Um, just for some background, the Colorado revised statutes allow for the review of areas and activities of state interest. Uh, our municipal code specifically regulates seven, chapter twenty-five, and article six allows for the view of arterial highways, interchanges, and collector highways. This project did get a referral to uh, relevant stakeholders, including fire authority, public works, police department, county, uh, the state, geologic survey, and uh, among others, the Upper Quay Creek Water Set Association, otherwise not. Um, I'm not going to go through the entire twelve page staff report, I'll just kind of summarize based on key uh, sort of uh, criteria lumped in sections. Uh, C dot is also, has representatives who have a representation. So I'll just very quickly go over what is included in this western section. Um, and there's some items in the western section that will be included in a later uh, submittal, so key things would be adding a third for with westbound lane, which would be a toll lane, I'll let the, the C dot team answer questions that are going into a little more detail. Construction of a fronter road linking US six to the Hidden Valley exit two four three, create addition of an eastbound auxiliary lane. Reconstruction of the highway for reconstruction of the highway for public safety purposes, greenway trail improvements, and restoration, uh, red car and habitat, um. The key highlights of this section notably, it does not include a noise wall at exit two forty-one. That is, uh, included as part of the overall project, but that's going to be included in the central portion and will require, uh, that review when that, that comes in. Um, likely this, this fall, and I'll, again, let's see, that, sort of, talk a little bit about that, um, so going into the criteria of approval, like I said, I kind of broke it up into general talking points, first being, uh, you know, this is all based on the thirty-one criteria that we reviewed in the staff report. Uh, first, I'm calling community and regional infrastructure needs. Essentially, we're, we're trying to review whether it's, um, improves infrastructure, uh, maintains functionality and the like. Uh, staff has found that it does meet these requirements. I seventy is important transportation in tourism corridor, bringing services and people into and out of the community. Uh, this project will improve on that without, um, in the long term, causing detriments. There's obviously short-term impact from construction. It'll be, um, periodic glass, you create out of lane closures during off-peak periods, um. Another thing to note is that the Greenway Trail will have to be closed in the, uh, project timeline, but the trade-off is that there will be significant improvements to the Greenway Trail through that portion of the project. And the applicant has proposed ways to sort of detour and shuttle people through that who are, who are on bicycles, um. The next, I'm calling master plan compliance, uh, I seventy improvements are contemplated in both the comprehensive plan and the I seven B Visioning Task Force document from two thousand and sixteen, uh, staff finds that this uh, largely conforms to master plan goals for, uh, things like congestion, um, and other improvements. The next, which I think is quite important, environmental considerations, obviously, the I seventy corridor has significant impacts on water quality, air quality, um, noise, and, uh, you know, this is a key discussion point. So Aqua, for example, is our water shed association who has authority over Clear Creek in some ways. You know, had concerns about, um, you know, the use of de-icer, which is not a specific project concern, but it's a concern worldwide, uh, the applicant. Water monitor monitoring, um, and, um, has an ITF or an issue task force to address long-term water quality, um, concerns, but this project does have some, benefits, um, on red car and habitat. They're proposing eight acres of vegetated habitat restoration on the corridor, um. They're, they're posing permanent water quality monitoring stations and, um, programs that, that detect impairments and, and work to address and mitigate those concerns. With respect to noise, I kind of mentioned, it's not, this current portion of the project won't necessarily have a negative or positive impact, um. In the next portion of the package, the noise wall is anticipated to have positive benefits, but again, that's not part of this project, um, portion of the project, that's part of what's being discussed tonight, though, see, um, the applicant will give a brief presentation on what is proposed for that, um. Air quality is not anticipated to be impacted. There's currently two monitoring facilities in this area, uh, national standards have been attained to date, and it's anticipated that will continue to be uh, attained in the future. Uh, my last section, this has to do with tourism visitation and cultural resources, so again, in the short term, there might be impacts, um, during construction, the greenway closure, glass, and the like. In the long term, the habitat restoration, the improvements to the Greenway Trail, may have positive benefits, um. So, I, that's basically my summary, my, so I'll just move on to recommendation and then, and take questions. So staff believes the criteria for approval for the application are met, um, and as such, I recommend approval of the ten forty-one application with the seven, uh, conditions that are included in the staff report and the proposed, uh, draft resolution that's in the package. That's it for me.
Well, thank you, uh, I'd like to open it up, uh, for questions, uh, council, uh, do you have any questions?
This was very thorough, thank you.
It was thorough.
Yeah.
We're not.
All right, well, Dylan, if you would just stand by, uh, we will have Kurt and his team come up, and, uh, I think they have a presentation for us. And, uh, should, uh, some question, uh, be directed at the city out of that, we'll take a look at it.
And I'll just, right over it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Dylan.
You're welcome. It's good to have you.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, let me pull up the presentation. Screen. Wow, right. I want to start off by saying thank you for having us here, uh, today to present.
To state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Kurt Kianka. K I O N K A. I'm CDOT's Floyd Hill Project Director. And with me today, I have Manny Whorton.
W H O R T O N, I'm for the consulting. Station Sellers, S T A C I A, Sellers, S E L L E R S, CDOT Communications, please.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And we also have one person online, Matt Aguirre, uh, he's our design project manager of the consulting team.
M A G U I R I. Thank you.
So thank you for having us here today, um, appreciate all the support you've had on the project to date. Um, want to give a quick update on where we're at on the project, look at, um, what is included in the west section. Uh, we're going to talk about the noise wall that's planned, that Dylan mentioned, um, it's not in this specific package, but using a future package to come, and then spatial detail a lot of our communication efforts, uh, to keep people informed. Um, so just looking on the screen real quick, these are the different packages of Floyd Hill. The section, which you're aware is currently under construction, that started in July, that's everything the top of Floyd Hill down to US six. Um, the west section, which is what we're asking for approval from, uh, the councils today, is, uh, planned to start in the spring of this year, and will carry on through the summer of twenty twenty-eight. It's everything in purple from Hidden Valley interchange to exit two forty-one in Idaho Springs, and then the final two packages are all in the central section, which is the orange. We have an access package that we're, uh, looking at getting out this summer to get out and do some early items, um, to allow access to construct the bridges in the central section, looking for that to start this summer. And then the central section, which will include that noise wall, will be, uh, later this fall, um, and we'll come back and ask. And then everything is, uh, planned to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, Dylan talked about these, so I'll cover them in details. The real need for the project is that bottleneck that occurs in the westbound direction, um, as you go down Floyd Hill, so adding that third lane, it'll be an express lane, not to be confused with the mountain express lane out here, it'll be a standard lane with a buffer, a two-foot buffer, standard shoulders, um, and will be operated twenty-four, seven. Um, also, the safety improvements throughout the corridor, really flattening those curves of I seventy, bringing everything up to a fifty-five mile an hour design speed and sight distance, um, sight distance allows you to see an object in the road and break in time before hitting it. Also, that extended on-ramp from, uh, US six in the eastbound direction, so there'd be that fourth lane extending up Floyd Hill and then dropping off after Homestead, allowing trucks to get up to speed before safely moving into traffic. Um, improvements to the Clear, Clear Creek Greenway Trail, also improvements to wildlife connectivity, uh, the, um, uh, wildlife crossing at Genesee is under construction right now, which will be completed this summer. Um, we also have some other wildlife crossings when we reconstruct the bridges at Clear Creek. Um, other potential wildlife or potential environmental enhancements include a riparian bench, which is included in the west section. Um, and then we also have two air quality monitors that were installed uh, at the beginning of the year and have been monitoring the air quality upstream and downstream. We have one here in Idaho Springs, and then we also have one at the fire station, um, head downstream from the project, and, uh, you can visit the website if anyone is curious to the current air quality. So talk about, uh, the progress that we've made to date. We started construction in the east section in July, um, had lots of rock excavation, uh, which included rock blasts, rock scaling, um. I should update this slide because if the rock blasting is mostly complete, uh, we did have the final few blasts in January. We've installed over nine football fields of drainage pipe in the east section and over twenty thousand square feet of shot creek walls that are sculpted shot creeks, so they're supposed to blend into the surroundings and look like rock. Um, we also relocated the entrance to the mountain express lane that was needed for future packages, and we wanted to hit that during off-peak sea, season, so we did that during mud season this fall, and, uh, if you drive through there and you see the work on the Greenway Trail, that is the utility relocations that are happening. Um, right now, there's overhead electric and communications lines that are being placed under the hill. So west section, again, construction is expected to begin this spring, and it spans everything from Hidden Valley to two forty-one, which is, uh, the Colorado Boulevard exit here. Um, again, straightening those curves, flattened, uh, out the curve on the other side of the twin tunnels. Um, we're reconstructing both bridges over Clear Creek, um, and that riparian bench, and then the wildlife pathways under Clear Creek. This is a, just a rendering of what it looks like today on the left, and then looking at how much flatten that curve is there, and then you can see the riparian bench that when we push I seventy into the mountainside, that opens up opportunities for, um, environmental improvements. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Manny to talk about the noise wall that is planned in the future package. Um, one thing that I will detail, the reason that it was moved out of this package and put in a future package is it is a very challenging noise wall to construct with the amount of utilities and the space in the corridor with the greenland, so we did find a way that I think is going to work very well for the noise wall, and with that, I'll let you.
Thank you. Uh, so again, we just wanted to provide you an update. Again, we're at preliminary, a little preliminary plus design on the noise wall, so we have come up with a concept that we think meets the commitments of the project, but the specifics of the designs, some of the aesthetics, some of the details of the exact end treatments, those things are still things that are going to continue to be worked on, and we'll have a chance to take a look at those with the next section approval in, um, in the central section. So we started out in the environmental assessment back in, um, twenty twenty-one, um, with the noise wall that's shown there in the green, and the, uh, it's a little hard to see, but those, those blue dots there are all of the benefited, uh, we call receptors, but basically the benefit, the people that would benefit from a noise reduction, and the benefits are defined by a five decibel average or more greater, um, reduction in noise, and that's just a regulatory threshold. So most of them are basically that, um, those townhomes that are just to the east of two forty-one. Um, those are the, the same receptors that we've been looking at as the project has evolved. So originally, we had this green, um, green line, uh, wall. When we got to the front, the finding of no significant impact, that section, the farthest west section towards the two forty-one exit, we were able to remove that section without, um, any reduction in the noise benefit. So it just helped with the sight distance, it helped with the, there's already a natural barrier where the, um, where the wall was, um, was teeing into the overpass. So, um, we looked at that, we, we shortened the wall up in that section for those reasons in the finding of no significant impact, then we brought on the contractor in the CMGC process, and we started looking at what was going to happen to build the wall in that, um, in that location from the overpass to the east. And that was about a eight hundred foot wall, and we're now at about a five hundred foot wall, and part of the reason that we did that was that we discovered significant utility, um, conflicts in that area and a very tight space, um, you know, the flat spots between the highway and the creek are taken up largely by utilities, so there just wasn't a lot of room to put a wall in that location. So we spent a lot of time investigating the utilities, working with the, um, uh, with your public works people, trying to discover, to really understand where we could align a wall and make it fit there with that, um, highway as well. And we're not widening the highway in this location, so again, we're kind of at the existing, we're just tying in, striping here, so we're not, the, the highway widening is not creating an issue with the noise, while it was entirely due to the, um, noise, they, I'm sorry, to the utility conflicts. So we came up with two designs. The first, uh, the kind of fuchsia, um, is that at the end on the east side is option two, the blue, um, the same option, um, exists from the overpass to the east to about the point where we have really significant utility conflicts. I'll show you on the next slide. Um, and then we had two options for how we overlap that additional piece getting down to the end of those townhomes. So it happened, you can kind of see in this, um, there's a lot of stuff going on. That point there, that dark, that dark line is the place where we had that fuchsia, that's option, that's basically our option two, that's the one we're recommending. At that point, we are, have to move much closer to the highway or much closer to the creek because utilities are just all start coming really close down to the highway in that location. And so there were a couple of different factors there. One was not hitting the utilities directly, and the other was the ability to maintain those utilities in the future once a wall was there. So we came up with a design that um, kind of balanced those two things, and we think will work. And again, some of the details will be worked out through the design process, but in concept, we think this, this will work and it will provide the same basic benefit. We did look at two different wall heights here. We looked at a sixteen-foot wall and a fourteen-foot wall. The fourteen-foot wall had virtually the same benefit, and it was a little bit less visually intrusive and, um, a little less expensive, so that was the recommendation there. So this is our final wall recommendation, um, that what you're seeing there in this, um, the wall shown in the blue line, um, the green is the Clear Creek Greenway, the purple lines are the benefited, the purple dots are the benefited receptors, so they're similar to the blue dots that you saw in the first, the first slide. Aside from the two ends, um, at the very ends of the walls, those, those are not getting a full five decibel reduction, so they're not considered benefited from a regulatory standpoint, but they're at four point nine and four point eight, so they're virtually the same, they just don't count into our cost benefit from a regulatory standpoint, but for, for the residents, they will basically have the same level of, of, of noise reduction, and a lot of the noise reductions are quite a bit higher than, than the five, so we have some that are, you know, eight, above eight, so it's really substantial. Um, so three is about where you would notice it, five is considerably noticeable, and then it's logarithmic, so everything after five is significantly, um, quieter. Um, so the next steps are, um, again, the aesthetics, we're still working out. What we've shown here is just, uh, um, this is a, um, simulation of what the noise wall would look like, the up close and then from the residence location. Um, and it was, um, this is a bird's eye view, so obviously, you know, we're looking at it above, you wouldn't see the highway from the wall, that's one of the, that's one of the characteristics of noise. If you can see the source, you're probably, you're not going to be able to, um, reduce the noise in that location. So a little bit of an awkward perspective there, but, um, but that's basically what it is. It's a fourteen-foot wall, it comes from about that point of the utility complex out to get to tea into the, um, overpass there. And we do have a couple of, um, additional steps to do, so as we're finalizing the design, we'll, we have done all of the modeling, but we need to do the final dotting of T, dotting of I's and crossing of Ts to, um, get the final noise report accepted through the FHWA and CDOT processes. And then the other, uh, requirement is that we conduct a survey of the benefited receptors. So each of those dots represents two, um, two receivers, it's a receptor location, two receivers because they're duplex units, so every, every one of the um, benefited property owners and, um, tenants will get a vote to determine whether they want to have a noise wall. If more than half of them do, which we expect that they do, um, we will build the wall. If for some reason, you know, that came back where the residents did not want a wall, then that would not be included as part of the project. We will build the wall. If for some reason, you know, that came back where the residents did not want a wall, then that would not be included as part of the project. So that's, that's the update there. Again, just, just wanted to give you an update that it is an important feature. We're still able to do it. We had some issues to work out and we'll be more. Any other questions? And it's not part of this approval because everybody has noted several times.
Thank you, Mandy. So I'm going to cover real quick what to expect as west section gets under construction. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, look for lane and ramp closures. Now I want to stress again that we are committed to keeping traffic moving during those peak times. So lane closures that, when they're needed, they're begun in the overnight hours during those off peak hours. As well as any ramp closures minimize any impacts with any ramp closures. As Dylan mentioned, the Clear Creek Greenway Trail is closed. And will be closed this summer. We are actively working with our state colleagues through our issues task force. To determine an appropriate detour and shuttle. We actually have a meeting this week, discuss that. I believe it's tomorrow. So looking forward to that. So what to look for this summer? And so got a taste of it last summer. Rock scaling and rock blasting and those are done during the daytime hours and they are resolved in the twenty minute traffic holds. And. Let's talk scaling first, scaling. Twenty minute traffic hold, rocks are knocked down off of the slope. This is for the protection of our workers as well as the traveling public. Those can happen up to six times a day, twenty minute traffic holds, traffic is allowed to clear before the next one is done. So there won't be. A backup on top of a backup. And this is during off peak times, Monday through Thursday, nine AM to three PM. Rock blasting. So that'll be later in this summer. And that's one blast per day up to three blasts per week. Again, during those off peak hours. Monday through Thursday, nine AM to three PM with the option for a Friday morning, nine AM to twelve PM blast. Those are those twenty minute traffic holds, perform the blast, make sure everything's good. Traffic is released. A lot of times they're less than twenty minutes. The one that we did in the last week was a ten minute traffic hold. And then traffic cleared fairly quickly. So. Up to forty minute delay for if you're entering the queue at the very end. The hold limits on eastbound and westbound I seventy will be Hidden Valley interchange and then west of the Veterans Memorial Tunnels. With our emergency responders and. Police chief, we are looking at different opportunities to make sure that traffic doesn't back up in Idaho Springs. If that is an additional traffic hold above. Idaho Springs is to make sure that we're, so we are looking into that. And so with that, I think stressing importance of our communication efforts and I will turn over to Stacia to walk through those.
All right. So raft blasting is some of our most impactful work on the highway. So we want to make sure everybody is as informed as possible. That includes our rafting community. So we already started to meet with some of the rafting companies back in the fall. Just to prepare them for what to expect this summer. We don't want to catch anybody off guard and want to make sure we're providing plenty of warning. So everybody can plan ahead of time and make sure that they're tied in with our project to stay up to date on communications. So as I mentioned, we presented to the CROA convention back in November. And there is going to be a kickoff meeting on March fourteenth that we'll be attending as well. And we've also developed our own FAQ's for the rafting companies that they can send out to customers or just have for their employees in general. And then we're going to coordinate traffic holes. So not only holding traffic on the highway, but holding traffic in the river as well. Really just to maintain everybody's safety that are using the full extent of the corridor. And this is going to be very similar to what we've done for communications in the past for the general public. Still have our FAQ documents on our website. So at, anytime you have questions about what we're doing. How residents might be impacted, you can find all that information on our website. We're in constant communication with our media partners as well, so making sure we're getting word out to local papers. Kurt and I just did a tour last week with the Clear Creek County or Clear Creek Current, there we go. And so we're going to continue to offer those tours for media, just to spread the word far and wide. I know the mayor just talked about our text alerts earlier today. And we're going to be utilizing our text alerts to let folks know about our upcoming rock scaling and rock blasting activities. Really just making sure that people are planning ahead of time. And you're not going to be spammed if you sign up for these text alerts, but you're going to know well in advance. When we're planning to do rock scaling or rock blasting activities during the week. We also have a hotline number that's going to be available. So you can call in at any time and get a voicemail that tells you about the upcoming construction activities. And will let you know if rock scaling or rock blasting activities are scheduled for that day or if they were canceled for any reason. So just. Many ways to stay in contact with projects. So you're aware of what's happening. And then of course, we'll be utilizing all of our variable message signs to those big digital boards above the highway. Talked through a lot of this already, but communications tools are still going to go strong throughout this year. We're always willing to add in some new tools to the toolbox. If you're thinking of ways, maybe we can communicate better with. Motorists and residents. But all of our information is available on the website, including all the ways that you can get in contact with us. We have e-blasts that go out every Friday. So we have a good amount of subscribers for that. That just lays out all of the construction activities you can anticipate for the following week. We're going out to meetings, community meetings, just far and wide to talk about the project, talk about the benefits and just overall. What folks can expect through twenty twenty-eight. And then we're really utilizing Co Trip. So we have co-trip.org, which is our website. And we also have the Co Trip Planner app. So you can find all of the construction activities for this project as well as all projects along the I seventy mountain corridor. Also really great tool used during the winter time. So if there's a storm coming through, you can see what roads are closed and what the traffic conditions look like. So. It goes beyond just benefiting our project, but benefits the corridor at large. So help us to share this information. We share on a weekly basis, all of the construction impacts on our C dot Facebook page. So you can share a message that way. But these are the different ways you can get ahold of us. If you haven't signed up for the text alerts already, I can't emphasize enough how helpful those are. So if you text Floyd Hill. All one word to twenty-one thousand, you're going to sign up for those alerts. And that's it for me.
Yep, thank you, Stacia. Are there any questions?
Yeah, you know, I would just like to open it up. It never fails, you're a few minutes late for an appointment. Get near Floyd Hill and all of a sudden rats, you know, I'm going to be stuck for forty minutes or whatever. And my personal story is. I am giving C dot an A with communications because. I only had to deal with that one time. Because I signed up for the text alerts that you were just alluding to. And they work. They work really well. So I have been minimally impacted because I know well in advance. I don't want to be on the road at, at nine fifteen, you know, for example. So just for the benefit of folks who may be watching at home. I'm saying that is just imperative. If you want. To breathe a sigh of relief for the next few years while this is going on, sign up for those because they're, they're working and they're working very well. And counsel, please, I wanted to open it up for our questions.
I would agree with you need to sign up like I signed up too, and I haven't gotten caught on any traffic because I plan. You know. But I think as you move through Idaho Springs, maybe you send us two a day. That's not a bad thing, you know. Like, I don't necessarily, I don't mind if you send me more than one. Maybe I'm a weirdo here. But I like to know what you're doing or if you have something that has changed. I'm okay with that. Send me one of the ones, but I don't have any complaints.
All right. Any further questions of the applicant? All right. I just want to make sure we don't have any public comment online or anything. Okay. All right.
Can I just ask really quick about what are your, I read a little bit of it in here. How do you, do you feel like that's going to be enough? Space for people in wildlife traverse under the bridges? Because I was reading some of your, like, it's not an actual wildlife. Passage like some of the bigger ones. Do you think that's going to be enough given like our elk herd and?
Please.
So the bridges. The bridges under six that are. Going to have not maybe as much space as we would like, but there's about ten feet plus a two foot path. The two foot path will be at wildlife level. One of the advantages, it's narrow. But one of the advantages of that is that it's not a shared path. So it's just a wildlife path. It's not one that people are also on. So that tends to make it more attractive for animals to use. The other advantage that. The wildlife committee, because we have a variety of different issue task forces and one of them is called in the live committee and it has. A participation by CPW, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife. The county or variety of different people. And one of the reasons why we selected this alternative as one of them referred is because the elevated structures. In addition to passage under the bridge. Under that US six provide an east-west movement along the Riparian corridor. Without the conflict of Interstate seventy traffic. So you will still have the frontage road or the US six connection there, but it's going to be a relatively lower volume. Lower speed traffic. So we think that wildlife will use that. Quite a bit more and there will be a big reduction in conflicts there. The other component, which isn't related to this, but we have a variety of culverts and other passages under the highway and all of those where we have the opportunity. We're improving wildlife passage through those areas, even if they're small. So if they may not be suitable, that the US, the US six ones will be suitable for elk. You know, obviously a culvert is not going to be suitable for elk. But there are those opportunities. And then in addition, we've, we've installed a lot of wildlife fencing and you may have seen. Some of that on the, on Lloyd Hill side. So basically from Soda Creek Road up through the Lloyd Hill interchanges. There's going to be fencing on both sides and that's not ideal for passage, but it is, it is really effective for vehicle wildlife collisions. So animals will not be able to do what they do now, which is one of our hotspots for vehicle collisions in I seventy corridors, right there in front of Clear Creek High School. In that elk meadow there. So they'll be, they'll be able to come out north and south to get out to Soda Creek. And it's, it is a pretty long, a long pattern there, but the land uses north and south of that. We're not ideal for our paths. We did consider a big overpass there and then started doing that, we did the one at Genesee. And we have another one that's in design at Empire, which were. More effective for wildlife at a lower cost. So we were able to do a bit more of the mitigation. So you know, kind of all of them are. Some of them are opportunities, some of them are designed and they're all, the design is, is looking for those ways to improve wildlife passage wherever we can.
I appreciate that for sure.
Any further questions? I also want to make sure we don't have any further questions of staff. Or if staff doesn't have something that they wanted to add before I close the hearing. All right. I will close the hearing at seven fifty-two, very much. And do I have a motion regarding resolution number two, series twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion regarding resolution number two, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution additionally approving. A ten forty-one permit for development in an area or activity of state interest within the city of Idaho Springs. For certain improvements related to the western portion of the Colorado Department of Transportation Interstate seventy, I seventy. Floyd Hill to Veterans Memorial Tunnels project.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
A second from Jeremy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And we will move on to our ordinance first reading, starting with ordinance number six. Do I have a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve ordinance number six, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance approving the conditional conveyance of property known as lot three of block fifty-seven. Former Gold Digger Field Settlement.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Kate. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Okay, we will move to ordinance second readings, starting with ordinance number one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance amending. Rates and charges for water and sewer service and making conforming amendments to the Idaho Springs Municipal Code.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Janine. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up is ordinance number two. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to. Go ahead. I'll move to approve ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four, ordinance amending chapter ten of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code. To amend existing animal regulations and establish additional animal regulations.
I will second that.
Thank you, Kate. A second from Lisa. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville. Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, ordinance number three. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance from the three, series twenty-four, ordinance adopting new article fourteen of chapter nine of the Idaho State Municipal Code. To establish, to establish a mobile food truck licensing program.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll go ahead.
I'll second.
A second from Janine. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And last of the second readings is ordinance number five. Do I have a motion?
Oh my goodness. Oh my God, I'm forgetting. I'm wishing you approved the ordinance number five. Series twenty twenty-four and ordinance extending the conditional vacation of a portion of Riverside Drive adjacent to Los Angeles. Of the mighty Argoson Mountain Miners subdivision.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
A second from Jeremy. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right. Next up is our city attorney, Carmen. Welcome. Good to have you.
Hi, Mayor Castle.
Looks like we, we do have one thing on the table and that would be. Our, our judge Goodby and retaining him.
Yes, Mayor Castle, I'll give a little brief explanation of this. This was the result and, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but really the city. Proposed amendment to Judge Goodby's agreement for judicial services with the city. Counsel, if you remember, you have already, I believe it was January, after you new folks who joined us were sworn in. You did move to reappoint him already. We had a discrete timeline to do that for his term. So he is retained for the next two years. However. Over the last year in particular. It came to our attention, again, city administration, that there were some. Sometimes, occasionally, and pretty rarely. Some rather unusual demands placed on our municipal court. And our judge in particular, cases outside of the ordinary scope. Of the regular municipal court docket. Where we have defendants, whether through counsel or on their own. File. Motions again that are pretty rare, like challenges to the constitutionality of ordinances. And motions and hearings that again, we don't typically see in municipal court. The judge in particular, over the last year again, spent a significant amount of time under a flat fee. That was always intended to represent his time for the usual court dates. But the judge does his job very well. And when demands are upon him, he rises to the occasion and, and handled a lot of things. That were above and beyond what that flat fee was always intended to represent. So again, we as a city thought, hey, that's kind of unfair. Thus, this particular amendment to his judicial services agreement. The real action on this is under section six. On page two of that agreement entitled compensation. And the added language. Is essentially the second sentence, which provides that for time spent on unusual or extraordinary tasks outside of the ordinary scope. Of the municipal court dates, the regular dates. And subject to city administrator approval, the city will pay the judge at the rate of. And subject to city administrator approval, the city will pay the judge at the rate of a hundred dollars an hour to do that extra extraordinary work. Uh, I, I will note, um, and I'm sure you wouldn't mind when I reached out to Judge Goodby to share that the city wanted to propose this. His response, his first response to me was, that's very generous. Um, and he himself proposed that we clarified that it was for really extraordinary tasks and that it would be subject to the city administrator's approval. So that's what you have before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
That seems fair.
I think that's completely fair.
We appreciate him for being so.
Yeah, we, we definitely loaded him up, uh, with a lot of extra hours. Uh, I'm glad we're correcting this.
Uh, any further questions for Carmen?
The only thing I might add, uh, mayor is, is retroactive to January first, beginning of this year.
Oh, thank you. Uh, very much. All right. Uh, then I would like to make a motion to approve the renewed judicial service agreement uh, for presiding municipal court judge F. Michael Goodby. And, uh, thank you, uh, Lisa for the second. And any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, no roll call, please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And, uh, Andy, uh, good to have you back from vacation. Uh, welcome. And did you have, uh, further to share with the group tonight?
Uh, nothing pressing. Um, I will have a larger report for, to make up.
All right.
Uh, for two weeks, but, uh, nothing further.
All right. And, uh, Jonathan, no request for action. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share.
No, sir.
All right. And, uh, Dylan, uh, anything further tonight?
I would say I included a list of items that we've kind of identified as potentially being valuable to work on. So he does have comments on that now or moving forward. Happy to get as much feedback as I'd like to get made.
All right. Very good. Uh, chief, uh, we saw your report and, uh, another action packed a couple of weeks for sure. Um, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with the group.
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Um, and we will move to, uh, Public Works. Um, we do have a, uh, a request for action regarding the, uh, the bear proof resistant trash cans. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve purchase of forty bear resistant trash bins from Barracuda in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents from mine item twenty-one dash zero, zero dash sixty twenty-eight. This expenditure will be reimbursed through a federal grant administered by the state of Colorado.
Thank you, Kate. And do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Lisa Manville.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And Paul, just want to make sure you didn't have anything further tonight?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Uh, Ed, uh, have your report, uh, no request for action. Just want to make sure you didn't have anything further.
No, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Um, let's see. Uh, I would like to, uh, take a minute here under, uh, mayor and council. Uh, I don't know how many of you, uh, knew former mayor, uh, Dennis Lundberry. But he, uh, passed away January the twenty-eighth. And, uh, he had, uh, I, I just found out Friday.
Oh, my God.
And, uh, you know, he was a brilliant and I do mean brilliant, uh, person. And, uh, I probably had known him twenty years. Uh, I, I spoke with his, uh, his widow, uh, Marilyn, uh, before our meeting tonight. And, uh, she wanted me to let everybody know of his passing and that he truly loved Idaho Springs. Been in the same house for forty years. Um, and, uh, Dennis is what I would describe. He was a very cerebral, uh, person. I mean, he would really dig in and get to all the different angles. And I can't think of a better example than our water, uh, plant up one oh three. Uh, the old one had been utterly devastated. Uh, it was an emergency situation to get a water plant up and running. Dennis, uh, did a lot of, uh, investigation and just tireless research on this new type of, uh, of water plant. And it was very experimental and he really felt that that was the wave of the future. Well, he turned out to be correct. He also got it done in practically no time and for a million dollars. Neither of those would fly, uh, today, I think we all know. So, uh, but you know, he just had a very, uh, dogged determination. And, uh, you know, when he was told, well, it's going to cost, you know, two or three times that, he's tough, is what I got. You know, and we're going to make it work. So, uh, anyways, uh, he will be sorely missed. And I'm saying, uh, if, if you didn't know him, uh, we are, will, will continue to benefit uh, from his perseverance for many years to come, uh, with the water plant. And, uh, he was seventy-seven, sure didn't look it. He was very, very spry. And, uh, he was just diagnosed, uh, with cancer the very end of October. The doctors gave him a few months and that is almost exactly, he passed away January, January twenty-eighth. So it was almost exactly, uh, three months. So, uh, anyways, with a, a heavy heart, I, I share that, uh, news of his passing. And, um, I just wanted to know if anybody has, uh, anything further, uh, to add. I, I'm going to, uh, go into executive session after this. If nobody has anything further. Yes.
Not regarding Mr. Lundberry, but, um, city hall will be closed on Monday for President's Day.
Thank you.
Heads up.
Yes.
And Linda, thanks for, and, and John for pursuing the, the memorial wall. It looks like you guys are getting there.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you. I'm sure everybody knew, Mike, one of our guys on our team, um, passed away as well. No. Yeah, Chris. Small. Oh, I am sorry. So, yeah. We see him, Jeremy. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. His career in the team, the corner and everybody were fantastic and. Jimmy, he's fairly young. Yeah, he was forty-nine, he just turned. So. But yeah, he didn't show up to work and my wife and I went to check on him and. Oh, my gosh. Found him passed. So. Wow, I am sorry. But, um, yeah, so thanks to everything that, all the people he touched. He was awesome, awesome human. Yeah. And, um, also thanks to our emergency services, Jim, including you. Who was right there with us by our side, our corner. He was totally awesome and very, very respectful for all of us there. So thank you very much, Jimmy. All right. Um, I would like, uh, to, uh, move that we go into executive session uh, pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, that four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses A and, uh, parentheses E, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property to determine strategy and to instruct negotiators, uh, concerning the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Kate. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.